Good evening. Welcome to the June 5th meeting of the Revere City Council. Could we please rise and salute the flag? Thank you very much.
Roll call of the members, Councillor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councillor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councillor Novoselfsky.
Here.
Here, Councillor Powers is absent, Councillor Rizzo. Here, Councillor Serino.
Here.
Here, Councillor Silvestri. Here, Councillor Visconti.
Here.
Here, Councillor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and President Pro Tempore McKenna.
Here.
Here, Coram, is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of May 22nd.
All in favor, all opposed, so order, accepted. Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. I'd like to do a point of personal privilege tonight. I would like to do a moment of silence for Arthur K. Guanasso. He was a former city employee and the son of the longest-serving city councillor, Arthur F. Guanasso. Can we please stand to have a moment of silence? We also have a moment of silence tonight with Councillor Visconti.
Thank you, Madam President. This Friday, the City of Revere lost a great community person. Joe DeSantis was a dedicated father and a cherished friend to so many people in our city. But most of all, he was family to the Revere Youth Hockey Program, to all the people that participated in that program. He was everybody's brother, father. He was just a good person. His impact on the lives of so many youth he mentored, as well as unwavering dedication to his family, will forever be remembered. His passion for the sport and his commitment to shaping our young athletes extended far beyond the rink, leaving his forever mark on the hearts and minds of all that knew him. Joe DeSantis will be profoundly missed, and his legacy as a father, grandfather, and the president of Revere Youth Hockey Program will continue to inspire us all. If we can stand for a moment of silence for a great man. Thank you.
Thank you.
Calendar item number three, the Revere City Council will conduct a presentation recognizing the following 2023 recipients of the City of Revere Community Scholarship. Hannah Mencari, Hibat Al Kasemi, and Francesca Fortulati.
Mr. Gravolisi.
Thank you, Council President to the City Council. My name is Joe Gravolisi. I have the honor of serving as Chair of the City of Revere Community Scholarship Fund. So just a couple of brief words about this. So this is a program that we opt in under the state, where each community has an opportunity to offer community scholarships that are based on three factors: academic merit, financial need, and our favorite part here, commitment to the community and community involvement. So all of the students that applied, and then particularly, we had wonderful ones from the winners, I had to write an essay about what community means to them and what community involvement means to them. As we all know, we have amazing students at Revere High School that make myself as a Revere High alum, and I know so many of you who are Revere High alums proud every year, whose accomplishments range from their academic accomplishments, to athletic accomplishments, to the robotics team, to serving their country and their community through the ROTC. So, as you can imagine, it's hard to settle on winners. So there are so many deserving students, and we're lucky to have the students that we have. A brief word about how this is funded. Just a really, really sincere thank you to residents who make an election on their property tax bill. When it comes out, they have the opportunity to make an optional donation, and that is predominantly how this is funded. We also get some additional contributions as well, and I want to thank Councillor Rizzo, who made a really generous contribution to this fund several years ago and really frankly allowed us to increase the size of the award. So thank you. And I would hope that others do the same. If any of you feel like you have some extra campaign or personal funds burning a hole in your pocket, we'd love to talk about ways to strengthen the scholarship fund, because we have amazing students that deserve it. With that said, they already mentioned the names of the winners. I just want to briefly acknowledge that Francesca is going to be going to Stonehill next year, Hannah to Penn, Hibat to Northeastern, and the three of them are of the many, many amazing students that are going to great schools next year. So congratulations to all three, and I have proclamations here from the mayor's office, and I would love to give them to you, Councillor President McKenna, to present. If we could welcome the students up that are here.
Acting Mayor Keith, will you come up here and present? Revere City Council, please come up. Yeah, just stand this way a little bit, stand sideways. That's good. Are you going to say anything?
Sure, please. Thank you, Madam President, and to the viewing audience, just wanted to echo the statement my good friend Joe Gravolisi brought up. This has been funded through tax donations when you do get that bill. There have been some community events, and of course, there have been some very generous sponsors. This we'd like to continue to have for years to come. So we do ask that when you do get that statement to bring it up. But I did want to echo also the community service piece. I was fortunate enough to read these essays, and there's a reason that these three young women are behind me and in front of me in a second. There's a reason that they were chosen, and their essays said a lot about what they've done as young people, and it's admirable. I saw these names come across on many scholarship applications, and quite frankly, these young girls, young women, are going to be getting other scholarships, and they have received other scholarships for good reason. They're exceptional. They're exceptional people, and they probably come from unbelievably exceptional parents and families, and I just want to say congratulations. You're unbelievable. Would you like me to read this?
Sure.
I'll read one for all. Tonight, we certificate of achievement and acknowledgement and recognition for being the recipient of the 2023 City of Revere Community Scholarship, and for achieving admission to different schools. I know you're going to Stonehill, and you're going to UPenn, and you are going to Northeastern. See, good memory, right? This fall, and special recognition is hereby accorded to Francesca Fortulati. I knew years ago when she was in my kitchen cooking, she'd be special. To Hannah Mencari. And Hibat Al Kasemi. Congratulations.
Calendar item number four, hearing called is ordered on a loan order in the amount of $10 million for Phase 14 construction improvements to the city sewer system.
This is a public hearing. We're going to start with proponents. People who are against this? Oh, excuse me, for? Oh, proponents, yes, sorry. Proponents?
Hey, guys, I'll keep this short. It's happy to see you again. If you remember, I was here last meeting, and must has changed since then. I've learned a little bit more about the wonderful way we do things.
You just give me your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Ralph. I am a Revere resident for five years and a business owner. A lot of the people in this room are my neighbors.
You need your address and your last name, please?
I think of my specific address?
Yes.
Okay, 360 Revere Beach Boulevard, and my last name is Celestin.
Thank you very much.
No problem. So I'd like to start with the pleasantries, because I think it's important to mention that a lot of the people in this room are my friends and my neighbors, people I recognize. The local law enforcement, my buddies. I found the honor and privilege these last few weeks of meeting some of the members of the City Council Chamber. It's been pleasant, and quickly, I learned their stories and how they didn't really have plans to run for office, but it was organic. They saw something that was impacting the community, and they chose to move forward.
Madam President, I'm not sure if he came up at the right time.
This is a proponent. So I'd appreciate no interruptions at this point until after I get to the point. You have to certainly say in return, right? So this is a proponent to the 10 million that we just spoke about. I have something in regards to that, but I'm trying to get to that point. But I appreciate it. I also appreciate making a time to meet in person. So, back to the point, I'm here with a lot of friends and family. I'm also here as the only black man in the building. Representation matters. But I never feel ununited to a common cause, which is community service. I appreciate those in this room that have met with me in regards to what I think are important to the community service. And I appreciate you guys not being, I'm getting to my point, but I appreciate no interruptions. And the secretary seems to have a lot to say. I'd be open for her to publicly speak now. Okay, so my point is simple. I'm a friend. I'm a humble man. That seems to be wronged. I won't be coming back up here again, but I just want to make it very clear that I am for anything that helps the community in respect to the 10 million. If that does that, then I'm certainly for it. My other issues, we are well aware of, and I hope they are addressed.
Thank you very much. Proponents? Any other proponents? Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Richard Viskey, 281 Broadway. I'm here to speak as a proponent of this project. Everybody is pretty well aware of the consent decree that the city is under. This money is very important to continue on with the successes we had in improving our sewer and drainage infrastructure in the city. These loans are through the state's sewer rate relief fund that give us profitable interest rates at 2%. We also receive forgiveness on principal through the American Rescue Plan Act funds, and it is the most efficient way to have these repairs done, so I am in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Proponents? Good. Name and address for the record, please.
Chris Chalamella, Acting Superintendent of the Water Department, 215 Rice Ave. I just want to speak towards the new VAC truck that's going to be part of this 10 million. That's a different one? All right. Will the 10 million go to the water and sewers? Is it going to go towards more of the mining laterals and pulling more of the drainage out of the sewers? Help us out huge. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. Any more proponents? Okay, we're going to close that side. Any opponents? Anyone wishing to speak? Okay, we're going to close that side. City councilors? Any city councilors? Councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. I guess just for the edification of the viewing audience that we're under this consent decree to fix our infrastructure, and this is just more millions of dollars that we have to put into it. It has been paying off dividends. As painful as it is to go to the people for this money, where it's under the law or the federal government that we have to do it, but it's also improving our infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councillor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm so glad we're still doing this. I know, I've been up here, it seems like forever. And ever since we started it, I've been voting for the funding to help solve this problem. And from what I understand, we're very close to coming to an end of the sewer portion of sealing the pipes and replacing any broken pipes that we see and stopping some of this infiltration. So I'm glad to see that, and we only get, maybe have one or two more years that we may have to do this particular portion of all these repairs. So I'm very glad, and we'll be honored to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Any other councilors wishing to speak? Okay, road call?
Shall the City Council approve a loan order in the amount of $10 million for Phase 14 construction improvements to the city sewer system? Councillor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers is absent, Councillor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and President Pro Tempore McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved. Calendar item number five, hearing called is ordered on a loan order in the amount of $750,000 for the acquisition of equipment for the capacity management, operations, and maintenance of the city sewer system.
This is also a public hearing. We're going to go with proponents first. Proponents? Anyone wishing to speak?
Good afternoon, Richard Viskey, 281 Broadway, City CFO. I am here to speak in favor of the borrowing to purchase this VAC truck for operations for the Water and Sewer Department. This piece of equipment is critical in us maintaining our sewer lines that we've invested all of this money in over the past dozen years or so. And again, through the state's revolving fund, we do get favorable interest rates and principal forgiveness on these loans. It is the most efficient way to borrow for these types of projects, and I am speaking in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Proponents?
How you doing? Chris Chalamella, 215 Rice. This is the one I went to speak on earlier. This is going to be a cold-weather VAC truck to help us during the winter times. That's the major difference here. The other one will freeze up the second you take it out under negative freezing temps. So this will be huge. All right? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any proponents? Okay, we're going to close that side. Opponents? Anyone wishing to speak? I'm going to close that side. City councilors? Councillor Silvestri?
Thank you, Madam President. This may be for Chris. Currently, right now at the DPW, how many in the Water Department have VAC license?
Well, there's a CDL, which is a Class B driver's license, and you need a Tinker's endorsement.
Yeah.
So there's three in the Water Department.
Okay. And is this just to be used in the winter, or will they be able to be used all?
This is year-round. It just, it will work better in the winter than the other. Okay, thank you. Exactly.
Councillor Novoselfsky.
Thank you once again, Madam Chair. As the Chair of the DPW Subcommittee on the Council, we've always been, this council has always been supportive of our members of DPW and making sure that they have the proper equipment, and we always support them. And I'm sure that this piece of equipment, which is not a toy, it's something that's going to be used on a regular basis, as has the old machine. But this and all other machines are very important for the operation of our public works, guys, and I will support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Any other councilors? Road call?
Shall the City Council approve a loan order in the amount of $750,000 for the acquisition of equipment for the capacity management, operations, and maintenance of the city sewer system? Councillor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers is absent, Councillor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and President Pro Tempore McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved. Calendar item number six, hearing called is ordered on a loan order in the amount of $500,000 for the management, investigating, and designing INI removal projects for the city sewer system.
This is a public hearing. We're going to start with proponents?
Hello, Richard Viskey, 281 Broadway, City CFO. This particular loan order is a program that is run through the MWRA. The info and infiltration loans that are available through the MWRA actually come with a very generous forgiveness. I believe it's 55% loan forgiveness on up to and including, I believe, the 12 phases of this. And then after that, it's 75% loan forgiveness on these loans. So again, $500,000 with practically 2/3 of it forgiven. Most efficient way for us to achieve the goals of management, investigating, and designing INI projects. And I am here to speak in favor of this loan order. Thank you.
Any other proponents? We're going to close that side. Opponents? Anybody against? We're going to close that side. City councilors? Road call?
Shall the City Council approve a loan order in the amount of $500,000 for the management, investigating, and designing INI removal projects for the city sewer system? Councillor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers is absent, Councillor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and President Pro Tempore McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved, and there are corresponding resolutions that go along with each of these loan orders. We'll have to go back and take a vote on the other. The City Council will have to go back and take a roll call vote on those two resolutions. We can move into the, the City Council can move into the resolution for this loan order, if they wish.
Okay. Road call on the resolution?
Shall the City Council approve a resolution for CY, calendar year 2023, CWSRF CMOM Equipment Planning Project? Councillor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers is absent, Councillor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and President Pro Tempore McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, the resolution has been approved. And I would recommend just going back to the calendar item number four for that corresponding resolution. Shall the City Council approve a resolution for calendar year 2023, CWSRF Construction Project Number 7310? Councillor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers is absent, Councillor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and President Pro Tempore McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, that resolution has been approved. And this is the corresponding resolution to the loan order that was in the amount of $750,000. That was for CWSRF Planning Project for Phase 15. Councillor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers is absent, Councillor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and President Pro Tempore McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, that resolution has been approved. Calendar item number seven, hearing called is ordered in the amount of $1 million for Phase 15 engineering design and planning costs for development of plans and specifications for INI and illicit discharge detection and elimination improvements to the city sewer system.
This is also a public hearing. Proponents? We're going to start with proponents.
Hello, Richard Viskey, 281 Broadway, City CFO. This particular loan order is for the planning of Phase 15 investigations of our sewer and drainage system. Again, comes from the Clean Water State Trust Fund, which has favorable interest rates and loan forgiveness. I know I'm being repetitive, but this will be the last loan order, and with that forgiveness and the favorable interest rates, I would recommend favorable approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Any more proponents? Okay, we're going to close that side. Opponents? Anybody against? We're going to close that side. City councilors? Councillor Rizzo?
Thank you, Madam President. I see Bob Button here in the office, I'm sorry, in the council chambers, and I'm wondering if I could just ask him a couple of quick questions while he's here.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the City Council. Robert Button with CDM Smith, offices at 75 State Street in Boston and Ocean Avenue, Revere. Good evening.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you, Bob, for being here, and welcome to local government. I understand you are recently elected in your town, so congratulations on that.
Thank you.
After being here for so many years, I'm surprised you ever did it, but congratulations to you.
Thank you very much, and we are using the SRF program to help us with our infrastructure in our town, so I do believe in it as well.
That's great. So my question centers around the consent decree itself.
Yes.
It's been years that we've been under this consent decree, and wondering what kind of timetable that the community is on. I mean, is there an end date where we can just go back into taking care of what we have as opposed to fixing what's broke? And not have to go through these loan orders every single year, tens of millions of dollars to fix an aging infrastructure that was ignored for probably the entirety of its existence, right? So do we have, do you follow that along? Does CDM Smith say, oh, it looks like Revere is going to wrap this thing up and year XYZ so that we have an idea of, you know, because of course, our residents have had to, you know, notwithstanding the loan forgiveness portion of it, which I believe it's in some way comes out of them anyway, you know, the loan forgiveness. We, you know, are ratepayers, but that money's coming from somewhere, right? Through taxes and so on, so, and I think our residents have been extremely patient and, you know, in absorbing not just the rates that, you know, have been going up over the years, but the work that's being done. You can't go down the street, it seems, without seeing our streets dug up and the inconvenience that means to our residents. So I'm just wondering if you have, you know, any idea of when we'll be able to satisfy, or at least get out of the consent decree?
Sure. Sure.
I know we were trying, when I was mayor, I know we went down to Washington DC and working with our federal delegation, trying to get ourselves, you know, maybe out of the consent decree and have them agree to a plan that would, might be a little more palatable for the city and the ratepayers. And that was eight, nine, 10 years ago. So do you have any idea what we're looking at, Bob, in terms of working our way out of the consent decree so we can kind of map our own future?
Yes, I can respond to that, Counselor. So I, I think it was Counselor Novoselsky said earlier, we've got about two more years left in the citywide rehabilitation. In the plan that you were talking about that we put together back in 2016 to give to EPA and DEP, we laid out a series of annual rehabilitation work in, in all the sewers in, in the entire city. We're in the low 90s, 90% in terms of having that work completed. There's a project that'll be starting in the next couple of weeks in the city to, to do this year's program that was approved last year by the council. And through that, through that effort, we've made tremendous improvements in the collection system itself. I think you recall when we had the Winthrop Ave problem and the pipes were falling apart in our hands. It's a much different situation now. We've had some rain events in the last few, few weeks where in the past, you would have had sewer, sewage in, in multiple homes throughout the community. And we've come through the events without any SSO overflows in the city. So that has made a tremendous benefit for you all, all your constituents and, and for the city as a whole. The consent decree mandated repairs, like I said, should be finished by about 2025, that, that summer season. Then there's a handful of, of projects that we're working with the state and with MWRA on to make the pipes bigger in the areas of the city where they need to carry flow out. Even though we've, we've done rehabilitation work, some of the areas of the city were built so many years ago that the pipes leaving those areas aren't, aren't big enough for all the development that exists. And these aren't just the big projects on the beach. These are some of the single-family homes that just outgrew some of the neighborhoods because of when they were built. And we've been working with the attorneys and the EPA and DOJ to stretch out that consent decree, as you were saying, so that it wasn't such a burden on the city. You could finish the rehab work and then work on those conveyance projects at a, at a better pace for the city so it isn't a burden on the ratepayers.
So you are saying that in two years, we will be, the handcuffs will be off with respect to the consent decree?
With the, with the rehabilitation work, there, there's still some work with the MWRA and, and a, and a connection that we've been talking about before, some increased capacity that'll, that'll occur for about a decade or so after that. But it won't be every year. There'll be a project every couple of years that'll need to get done, and they'll be very localized. It won't be spread throughout the city as it has been over the last decade or so.
Okay. And would you, would you agree that within the next couple of years, that at least the rate of increases with regards to water sewer rates, we should see some sort of a leveling off?
Yep, absolutely. Yep, though you, you should have maybe even started to see that. Some of the early projects for the first couple of years, some of the debt service may actually be paid already on, on a few of the early years of the, of the work that we were doing. They had 10-year borrowing periods, and we're in year 13 or 14 now, so I even see some of it working itself off already.
So as the debt service kind of falls off, then presumably, we could even start to talk about lowering water and sewer rates, correct?
That might be a little bit longer of a horizon, certainly not having to raise them to, to pay the capital cost would be absolutely something that you should be considering and thinking about. The, the lowering of rates, I just, I would have to do the math to look at that and exactly when you'd want to do it.
What would make me think of it, as you said, as some of these loan orders are kind of, you know, they're, you know, they'll be falling off. I mean, and if we don't have to go up as, as rapidly as we have been over the last 15 years, then, you know, we might, well, that's something, that's for future discussion, but that's good news.
Yes.
And I'd also like to, while you're up here, I know you've worked closely with our, our own Public Works Department. And, you know, I know, I know by all accounts, they have been more than cooperative. So I want to not just thank the residents for their patience, but also give a shout out to our Public Works Department that has been intimately involved with this over the last, like I say, 15 years or more. Tom Ambrosino was mayor when it was signed, so, you know, we're going back quite some time now. And I know that, I know that they've done a, a great job, all of them down there at the city auditor, in, in helping this along, so.
It's just as important, as Mr. Charamella said, that you maintain it after you make the investment in the infrastructure. And, and what you all have invested in the Water and Sewer and Drain Department through the DPW is, is helping them to do that. They have the manpower, the equipment, and the training they need to properly run the system, and that's very, very important. And it frankly has been recognized, not only by you, Counselor, but by EPA and DEP, who have spoken very highly of the operations and, and the, the attention that the city of Revere has paid to addressing this problem.
That's great. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Visconti?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Bob. Quick question. You mentioned the fact that after the two years, there's going to be additional work needing to be done for the foreseeable 10 years, you said? Is there a projected cost on that, or has that been projected out?
There's, there's a couple of different directions, Counselor, that the, that the city could go at, at that period in time. And, and one of them involves working very closely with the MWRA to actually add a new connection to your system so that the flows can be balanced more effectively through, efficiently through the city itself. So the, the final costs will be based on the, on the ultimate direction that's chosen. And then ultimately, the support that you can get, we're, we're working with the city of Austin, the MWRA, and others on a regional solution. And if that regional solution comes to fruition, it will dramatically help with some of those costs. So there's, there's a, there's a couple of years' worth of work that we're doing now to finalize that information, and then we'll be reporting to EPA and DEP in 2026 on what the city's direction is. So there's more to come on that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other Counselors? Okay, road call vote?
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Shall the City Council approve a loan order in the amount of $1 million for Phase 15 Engineering Design and Planning Costs for Development of Plans and Specific, and Specifications for INI and Illicit Discharge Detection and Elimination Improvements to the City Sewer System? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers is absent. Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and President Protempore McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved. Calendar item number eight is the Committee of the Hall report.
Thank you. The Committee of the Hall met earlier today and saw a presentation on the mentoring opportunities of how to become a big brother or sister to Revere High School freshmen. Thank you. Going to place this on file.
Calendar item number nine, communication from the city auditor relative to the FY24 Budget Appropriation Order.
Refer to Ways and Means? Oh. Mr. Viskey, would you like to speak? I'm sorry. I'm jumping, I'm jumping too fast here.
No, no, no problem. I was just going to let the council know that the appropriation order is in the inside of your budget book that I have distributed to the council, and fully expect this to go to Ways and Means. I believe the schedule's already been set up by Counselor Visconti on the, on the budget hearings. But you do have a complete budget book in front of you with the capital improvement plan, the operating budget, all the financial policies and procedures, and any other things you need to know about municipal finance. And happy reading, and we'll see you next Monday.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. And we're going to refer this to Ways and Means.
Calendar item number 10, communication from the city auditor relative to the departmental revolving funds spending authorization.
Mr. Viskey, I didn't leave you out this time.
That's okay. I got a bunch of them, yeah. This, this council order is basically just a spending authority for the revolving funds that you've adopted through, they've been ordained. That was new from the DOI several years back, that revolving funds become ordained, which is supposed to make it easier for us to conduct business. Yet we're still subject to come up here and ask for the annual spending authority on all those revolving funds. Within your budget book, there is a whole section on revolving funds with a schedule of all of the departmental revolving funds that have been voted, with nine months of revenues in, expenses out, and a 2024 spending authority. Again, this isn't money that is spent unless the money is in the revolving fund and needs to be in the fund in order to spend it. But we are still required to get, not to exceed them out from this council. So this one is something you may want to vote on tonight, but happy to talk about it in committee as well, but happy to answer any questions otherwise.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Counselors that wish to speak? Counselor Novoselsky?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, Mr. Viskey, just as FYI, it may have been a typo, but said this has to be approved for July 1, 2022.
Yeah, that may have been a mistake because I used last year's letter to update this year, so I apologize for that.
Just double checking.
Yeah, no, it's, it's for 2024 fiscal year, so as long as it's voted by the end of fiscal year '23, so thanks for your shot by, Counselor.
Thank you. Any other Counselors?
Yeah.
Going to take a road call vote?
Pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a Half, shall the City Council approve the FY24 departmental revolving funds? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers is absent. Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and President Protempore McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, the revolving funds have been approved. Calendar item number 11, communication from the city auditor relative to free cash transfer for the snow and ice deficit.
Mr. Viskey?
Good evening. I am respectfully requesting that the City Council vote from certified free cash the amount of $515,757. That was the accumulated deficit in the snow and ice budget. I know it's probably, first question is going to be, why is it half a million dollars when there was no snow? We had plenty of ice events, and, and a lot of this is just due to ice as well as the, the overtime that it takes to do that. However, we were also forced in this fiscal year to secure some third-party vendors to help store our equipment and, and keep our equipment housed indoors. We do have some very valuable equipment for sewer work and water work, so this number took me by surprise a little bit, but it is truly what it cost us for snow and ice, not, not so much for plowing the snow, but the, the sand and salt and, and the overtime required to sand during those icy storms, but also to keep our equipment stored over the winter while we wait for our DPW facility to be completed. So a lot of those costs will be one-time costs in fiscal year '23. And with this appropriation, I'll bring that account down to zero, so there'll be no need to raise that on the fiscal year '24 recap, which the budget is predicated on the fact that we won't have to raise a deficit for snow and ice. So I am hoping that we can get this free cash certified vote for the snow and ice deficit so we can have a balanced budget. Otherwise, I'll have to raise that next year and work that out. But yeah, I know, I know the number's a little scarier with no snow, but I'm ready for the questions. Thank you.
Counselor Silvestri?
Thank you, Madam President. That was going to be my question, Rich, is, is how we would get to $500,000 with no snow, but you just answered it, understanding that it's partly due to equipment and storage and whatnot. Makes a little bit more sense, but the number was surprising. Thank you.
Counselor Rizzo?
Thank you very much, Madam President. My questions are along those same lines, but my question would, I just want to go one little step further. How much was the storage cost for this equipment? I mean, how much equipment do we have to store? Do you know what the storage costs were versus the cost of the actual snow and ice removal and?
I, I do have those numbers. I don't have them in front of me. I do know that the majority of the expense for this snow and ice deficit was salt and sand. The equipment, we stored some of it in our boat yacht on, on Thera Ave, but we did have to secure that building. We did have to bring in equipment to keep that building warm and heated. And we did also have some other space that we were able to secure to keep some of our other equipment there. But basically, we had to retrofit some of these places to keep primarily the water and sewer equipment that helps, you know, clean out those catch basins and stuff during those salt and, and sand storms. We, we didn't have anywhere to keep our equipment over the winter, so we did.
So we don't know what was, I mean, I know we're paying $35,000 a month at the wellness center down there. Was no part of that building, they could have put a little hole in and moved it in there for $30,000 a month? I mean, it was like, I don't know.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, we, we didn't, we didn't have the capacity to create a Unfortunately, we didn't have the capacity to create a big enough doorway to fit the equipment, and so that's why we used the area. But I actually researched that same thing. I was looking for, trying to look for storage space throughout the city of existing, but we are just, we don't have that type of facility length and width wise to fit some of this stuff. And again, I think a lot of this will be one-time expenses that you won't see in the future when our DPW facility is completed.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Counselor Visconti?
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Rizzo beat me to the punch. I was going to ask the same exact question.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Road call?
Shall the city council approve a transfer in the amount of $515,757 from free cash to the snow and ice deficit account? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers is absent, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and President Pro Tempore McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer from free cash has been approved. Calendar item number 12, communication from the city auditor relative to the free cash transfer for fire department automotive maintenance.
Mr. Viskey?
Hello again. This free cash appropriation is to make up the difference in the deficit in our equipment repair account for the fire department. It's no secret that we've had some significant mechanical problems with some of our fire equipment. People have seen Boston and other cities' equipment here filling in while we get these repairs done. These were emergency in nature, and we did comply with all the laws that allowed us to overspend this line to get our critical equipment repaired and back into service. And this is just an appropriation to make up that deficit prior to fiscal year 2023 closing. And again, it was for three major repairs. We had an engine go on one of our trucks. We've had some chassis and other bigger problems on these equipment. And this is just appropriation to make us whole in that repair account.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Any counselors? Road call?
Shall the city council approve a transfer in the amount of $160,000 from free cash to the fire automotive maintenance account? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers is absent, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and President Pro Tempore McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved. Calendar item number 13, communication from the city auditor relative to the retained earnings appropriation request for fiscal year 24 Water Soil Enterprise Fund.
Hello. I might as well just stand up here. This appropriation is basically, there's two appropriations from Water Soil Retained Earnings. One, you'll see later on, that has to do with the capital plan for fiscal year 2024, and this would be the balance of the retained earnings certified by Department of Revenue. And what we're doing is we're proposing to put any balance left in that retained earnings to help offset fiscal year 2024 cost of operating the Water and Soil Enterprise Fund. So that particular amount of money would bring that account down to zero, assuming that all of the capital appropriations are approved. This money needs to be voted by the end of the fiscal year, otherwise we would have to wait for next year's retained earnings to be certified to access that money. So we've done this in prior years where we've used surplus from last year's operations to help buy down the fiscal year 24 water and soil rates. So that's what this appropriation is about, and happy to answer any questions on that.
Counselors? Any counselors? Road call vote?
Shall the city council transfer $1,1994 from the Water Soil Retained Earnings Fund to the fiscal year 2024 Water Soil Enterprise Fund? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers is absent, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and President Pro Tempore McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved. Calendar item number 14, communication from the city auditor relative to the overlay surplus appropriation.
Okay. Earlier this fiscal year, the Board of Assessors released $300,000 from their overlay account. The overlay account is basically the account that we set up to pay for abatements, exemptions to property tax bills in the city. We had more money than we needed in that overlay account, so it was released by the Board of Assessors. From that, $75,000 was appropriated earlier this fiscal year to do some appraisals of some of the larger commercial and industrial properties in the city. We have $225,000 left in that overlay surplus account that needs to be voted by the end of the fiscal year, otherwise it goes to the bottom line. So what I am proposing here is that we spend the balance of that $225,000 in two ways. The first way is to appropriate another $75,000 to do some appraisal work on some of the larger commercial industrial properties, just to ensure that we are where we need to be as far as the market dictates on these type of larger, trickier properties, a lot more difficult to assess values on the larger properties than single families and two families. So $75,000 will help us do some appraisals on properties to ensure that we have them on the books at market value. And the $150,000 is something that I am requesting appropriation so that we can do a comprehensive salary and benefit survey throughout the city, as well as revamp all of the job descriptions in the city. And I think that this is really prudent at this time because all of our contracts are settled. We have fiscal year 24, all the contracts are in place, but in fiscal year 25, we will have all of them open for negotiation. And what I'm hoping to do is do a comprehensive salary and benefit survey with any like-sized communities throughout the Commonwealth, also get all of our job descriptions current. We do have, in another role, I am the chairman of the retirement board, and a lot of times cases come before us, and if we don't have good job descriptions, it's really hard for us to administer any accidental disability benefits and such. So what I'm hoping to do is take this surplus money and put it towards doing a comprehensive salary benefit job descriptions citywide so that when a new mayor comes on in fiscal year, in county at 25, or 24, rather, we'll have a really great document to work off of, and then we can begin our collective bargaining going forward. So I don't know if $150,000 is too much or not enough, to be quite honest, but what I'm hoping for is to get that appropriation, do an RFPL for those types of services, see what those costs are coming in, and then if we need more money, hopefully not, I can come back. If we need less money, then that money could otherwise be used for other purposes. But having this one-time money, it was a unique opportunity to do this type of study, and I'm hoping for favorable vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any Counselor Morabito?
So I'm under, for some reason, I believe we restructured our departments about eight years ago, and we did a comprehensive study analyzing proper departments, proper titles of department positions. So can you research that? Because I'm pretty sure it came before the city council, and the whole cities, City Hall, all of City Hall, all of its departments were restructured, positions were eliminated that weren't needed, and positions were renamed.
I mean, I could certainly do some research, but I mean, that was a decade ago, so a lot has changed in eight years. And this isn't really to look to restructure anything in particular. This is just so that every full-time person has a correct job description for their job and that the compensation is competitive with our peers as well as our benefit structure. So again, I could come up here and tell you what I think, but I think if we get a third-party assessment of like communities on our salaries, our benefits, and then good solid job descriptions throughout the city, I think we'd be in a much better place. But even if there was something done eight years ago, it's really outdated at this point, to be quite honest.
Thank you. Counselor Silvestri?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Viskey, is this some similar to what we did just a couple of years back? When we did this a few, I know for Unit A, we did some comprehensive studies with job descriptions and communities around us to get people more online with salaries. Is this something that's going to be more in-depth than that, or?
Yeah, it would be much more in-depth because quite honestly, we did that salary survey just by pulling budgets from other communities and trying to earmark particular departments, especially in our management union, to make sure that they're current. But what I would envision is a much more deeper dive into what the departments do and how they may differ from one city or town to another that has comparable population, comparable budget size. Again, we have a benefits package here that may be much better than some communities, maybe much worse. You know, benefits are about 30% of a total compensation of an individual, so I think it's really important to include those benefits as well as just salary, hours worked, you know, hourly rates, salaried rates, there's, you know, we have to stay competitive here. And the only way to do it, I think, is to go and get a comprehensive survey. And like I said, I hope the timing is such that once there's a new mayor-elect, we'll have a great document to review and start that fiscal year 25 budget process. So that's the strategy I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rizzo?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, just one question, because maybe you can refresh my memory. You were talking about putting an RFP out to get somebody to do this. Isn't that something that the Collins Center could do? Would the Collins Center be bidding on this, or can we go directly to the Collins Center and ask them?
We could. I hope they're not watching, but I would like to put it out for RFP to get multiple bids and see who would actually perform this task the best. They're certainly exempt from 30B. I could go out and hire them to do this, but I know there's many other outfits that do this type of work, very respectable outlets, and I would like to cast a wide net to get the best report and results.
Okay. Can we, should we get a price from them and see what they want to charge us? Or, because I doubt they're going to respond to an RFP, are they?
I mean, everyone's welcome to respond to the RFP, but I think it would be best business practice to put this out to bid and see what kind of competitive bids we got. That's how I'd like to approach it, but you are not wrong. We could just hire the Collins Center, and you know, that may be the strategy, but I think that there are other outfits out there that I've read reports in different places that may serve us better. And that's no knock on the Collins Center, but there are many different groups out there that do this type of work as well.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor. Counselor Sorino?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, through you, Counselor Rizzo asked why can't the Collins Center do it? But I would go a little bit further and say, why wouldn't department heads be able to fully flush out job descriptions of their employees? And I understand maybe the benefits analysis, but in terms of positions and job descriptions and all of that, why wouldn't that just be done in-house?
I just think that this city needs a total overhaul of all the job descriptions done by a third party to really give a, really not a, I don't want them to lean one way or another on a particular person or a particular job. I just, I think the city would be best served by having someone come in here and interview the departments, interview the department head, and really, I mean, we have five different levels of clerical jobs here. I mean, I don't get asked once a week, why is this clerk at this and why is this clerk at that? So, you know, just clerical-wise, we have a million different types of jobs that, you know, we have job descriptions. Some go back to the 90s, 2000s, 2010s. And I just think that if we just get job descriptions that are uniform in nature and really descriptive of what the job is, so that retirement board can do their job, and we can hire and have good job descriptions to fall back on for us, it's going to serve the city best. The department heads may be able to do it. Some may do it better than others. It's, you really get kind of a hodgepodge if you got 30 different department heads doing the same task, where I think that it would be better that we could get one particular professional that's done this, you know, many times over the years and decades to really give us a great product. So I'm just hoping to get a little more professionalism in this, to be quite frank.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Visconti?
Thank you, Madam President. Are you including, I know a couple of years back, there was an organizational structure change, you know, with the previous mayor making chiefs and stuff like that. Are you including those positions as well, or is it from the top down?
I'd like to do comprehensive from the top. Every full-time equivalent job you see in that budget, I'd like to have included as part of this, and that's why the dollar amount is what it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Madam President. I agree, and I think it needs to be a completely impartial, non-connected body that we hire to look this over. And I think you're being very frank when you say that it's at best a hodgepodge of, I don't want to go down that road, but anyways, I think it needs to be completely non-connected, non-political, non-incumbent people looking at this, and then I think it'd be money well-spent. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Road call?
Shall the city council approve the following transfers totaling $225,000 from the overlay surplus account, $150,000 to the comprehensive survey account, and $75,000 to the assessors' revaluation account? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers is absent, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
No.
No, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and President Pro Tempore McKenna?
Yes.
The transfer has been approved. Calendar item number 15, communication from the city auditor relative to the acceptance of a gift for the Health and Wellness Center, HASS Health and Wellness Center, excuse me.
Thank you. As you probably read in your package, the management of Amazon has graciously offered to donate $150,000 for facility improvements to the HASS Health and Wellness Center. Those types of donations require acceptance by this body. So basically, just trying to follow the law that says this council would need to accept that gift per Mass General Law Chapter 44, Section 53A for those purposes. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Mr. Viskey, why are they giving us this money?
Because we asked them for it.
Why did we ask them for it?
Because we can use it.
Seems like hush money, so we'll leave them alone.
Well, it's not that hush. We are talking about it. You're required to accept all donations.
Counselor Morabito?
That was my question.
Counselor Sorino?
Thank you, Madam President. I would say, when did they offer, or when did the offer come in?
I believe the letter is part of the package. I think it was maybe late January, early February.
All right. I won't look a gift horse in the mouth, so of course, I'll support it. But one question at the city level, just to clarify, and I know that it says for facility improvements, but just to be clear, not going toward any salaries, correct? It will be specifically for the upkeep of the building?
My job is to make sure that the money is spent for the reasons of the gift and its acceptance. So once you accept it for the facilities improvements, that'll be what it's used for.
Any other counselors? Counselor Visconti?
Something off the topic of the $150,000, I'm sorry, but only because I've been asked, how long before the HASS Center will be open?
I will leave that to somebody else to answer.
Any?
I'm not prepared to answer that question right now, Counsel.
Thank you.
Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Viskey, I'm sure there's no strings attached to this donation. However, they don't have a lot of goodwill with me right now with sitting on that $150 million building, and we're not getting any excise tax from any of their supposed new vehicles that were going to occupy that new building. And I'm sure there is, there's no, of course, no quid pro quo here, but maybe we should have asked them for $500,000 instead of $150,000, but I'll graciously accept it.
Yeah, I'm not pleased with that development either, but I don't think we should refuse their donation for that, but again, appreciate it.
Any other counselors? A road call to accept the donation?
Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, shall the city council accept a donation from Amazon in the amount of $150,000 for facility improvements to the city's new Health and Wellness Center? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers is absent, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and President Pro Tempore McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, the donation has been accepted. Calendar item number 16, communication from the city auditor relative to the FY24 Capital Budget, General Fund, and Enterprise Fund appropriation requests.
Thank you. As part of your budget that you received this evening, there is a section in there that goes into detail about the entire capital improvement plan, which is a five-year plan, and then the fiscal year 2024 capital improvement budget, which would be any monies that would be appropriated or borrowed or otherwise accepted to fulfill the 2024 capital improvement budget. Now, what you see before you today is the stuff that we are proposing that we pay as we go, as we like to call it, through appropriations from our stabilization fund for capital improvement and our free cash from the general fund and retained earnings from our water and soil fund. And there are many different items in each of those, and I'm happy to go through them if you'd like. If not, if this is going to go to Ways and Means, I'm happy to discuss it, Ways and Means, but these are the items that we want to pay for as we go, so we don't incur any borrowing costs, and that we can get a leg up on trying to get some of this equipment ordered because we are really challenged in getting some of this larger equipment done. In some cases, it takes two to three years to get some of this equipment. So any chance of us getting a leg up to get this stuff procured in purchase orders and set up for delivery would be helpful. But happy to answer any questions or talk about it in committee.
Counselors? No counselors? Excuse me?
We'll talk about it in committee.
So there's going to be three separate, oh, no. What would the council like to do? Put it in committee or take a vote?
Send it to Ways and Means, yeah.
Okay. Ways and Means?
Calendar item number 17, communication from the city auditor relative to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund appropriation.
Just when I thought I was done. Yes, as you recall, you had, this body has accepted Mass General Law that allowed us to set up a stabilization fund for the affordable housing, I mean, a trust account for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Those dollars are appropriated into that fund, and they cannot be expended out of that fund without your approval. So the Affordable Housing Trust Fund has met, and they have voted favorably for one initiative, and that is the initiative before you, I believe, $7,500 to do a housing study. However, this body would have to approve that money out of the trust into the account so that they can then begin that process. So the two-thirds vote is required by this council to access that money.
Thank you. Any counselors? Road call?
Shall the city council approve a transfer in the amount of $7,500 from the Affordable Housing Trust to the Department of Planning and Community Development Consultant Services? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers is absent. Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and President Protempore McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved. Calendar item number eighteen, communication from the acting mayor relative to the implementation of the ward-based partnership with community outreach liaisons.
Name and address for the record?
Gianni Hill, Mayor's Aid, 281 Broadway. Give you all a brief break from our city CFO, Rich Viscade.
We can bring Rich back up if you want.
Madam President, through you to the council. I'll be brief here. So Acting Mayor Keef sent a communication to you all last week about the new, the implementation of the ward-based partnership with our community outreach liaisons. And in that letter, it mentions, "Community outreach liaisons will assist in conducting regular outreach in assigned wards in neighborhoods to increase participation in community events and meetings, and in providing direct communication from the city as to key programs, events, and other information." And so essentially, this work is already being done by our community outreach liaisons, but we wanted to work with our liaisons to assign them to particular wards. So we currently have three liaisons. Each will be assigned to two wards, and luckily, they all live around the city, so they'll probably take the ward in which they live and one additional one as well. So we'll be working with the ward counselors to figure out what's best in terms of who should be working with which ones. And basically, they offer a ton of services to our residents and a lot of outreach. So some of the things that they do, for example, they assist with outreach for our Connect program, which operates out of the downstairs of City Hall every Thursday, offering services and connections to SNAP applications, tax prep, job search help, financial coaching, housing, and much more just through that. They also connect residents with English classes, computer classes for seniors, and other assistance for seniors as well. They also help with mosquitoes and rodents abatement. And recently, just a couple of projects they've been working on that have been really spectacular. They did door knocking for some of the flooding going on near Gibson Park to alert some of the residents in the area and get them the information and the help that they need, and connect them with any city services that might be helpful. They also used our brand-new mobile city hall down at Shirley Ave last week to set up a table outside, get the word out about some of the services that we offer. So they're out in our community, and the goal here really is to have them in specific wards. So once we work on those assignments, we'll be reaching out to the counselors for any feedback as well, to really get you those connections. So you'll all be aware of who's working in wards one and two, three and four, five and six, for example, and you can reach out to those specific liaisons with any events going on or any information that you want to share with them, for them to disseminate and share through their networks as well. So I'd also welcome, if any of you are part of, I know there's lots of social media groups, Facebook groups for different wards and different neighborhoods, feel free to send those along to us as well. We'd love to get our liaisons into those groups so that they can share information. They offer services in English, of course, Spanish, Arabic, and Portuguese. So they're a great tool for any of the different programs or events that you might have. Feel free to call the liaisons assigned to that ward. And for the counselors at large, feel free to utilize them as well. If you have an event or there's something that you're aware of going on in Ward One, for example, reach out to the liaison assigned to Ward One or coordinate with the Ward One counselor, and we can make sure that we get a liaison to the event to assist with, you know, any translation services, any outreach, getting posters and things posted on social media. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Any Counselors? Counselor Morabito?
So two questions. How are these liaisons chosen, and are they paid, volunteered?
So they are employees with the city of Revere through our 3-1-1 constituent, well, they fall under the 3-1-1 constituent services office.
Counselor Silvestri?
That was kind of my question, but how do they differ from 3-1-1? So I guess I'm kind of confused. It almost seems like we're duplicating services, and if I'm misunderstanding, let me know.
Madam President, if I may. So, great question. They are an extension of the 3-1-1 constituent services office. So their focus, 3-1-1 and constituent services, their focus is to respond to residents, connect them to the services they need when they reach out to City Hall. These folks, and this program kind of started during COVID, I believe it was the COVID ambassadors, this took shape and became the community outreach liaisons. We found a lot of great success with the work that they were doing, and really getting folks involved, and just aware of the different things going on in the city. So 3-1-1, they have to be in the office staffing the phones and answering phones, answering constituent service requests and emails that they get. And our community outreach liaisons are actually on the ground in the community, working at different events for the city, knocking on doors. You know, when the accident happened, the incident down on North Shore Road where that car drove into a building, our community outreach liaisons were out there that morning, knocking on doors and speaking with residents, and just connecting them with different services available in the city, whether that's connecting them to our emergency response manager in the city, if they needed housing assistance, whatever it might be. So like I said, their job is really to be on the ground as opposed to our folks in 3-1-1, or they're staffing the office to answer any constituent service requests.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sorino?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, through you to Mr. Hill. Keen people watching might remember that this, we kind of discussed this during last year's budget process, in that these community liaisons were born out of the COVID ambassador program, which was paid for at the time by ARPA dollars and whatnot. And then, last year during the budget, Counselor Visconti, myself, and a couple of others had expressed concerns that, all right, this line item is funded by ARPA, these positions are funded by ARPA, but once that money dries up, are we now going to have to put a line item in the budget for these? And it just seems that we're creating, although well-intended and a great program, more employees that, quite frankly, I think between the mayor's office, the ward counselors, that these positions, I think, are over and above, especially, like I said, at first, they were paid for through grant money or however, but now you're kind of morphing it into something else and something more that's going to have to be sustained for years and years. And how do you plan on sustaining that? You know, we, I won't get into like the high school funding and whatnot, but we have these debates constantly about how we're going to afford things, and, you know, we're just, we spend money willy-nilly on positions, so, and salaries. So I just want to, what's the plan? What's the administration's plan for funding this?
Madam President, if I may, through you to Counselor Sorino. So, great question, great point that you raise. To my knowledge, these are grant-funded positions that are considered temporary, they're not permanent positions. And the goal here really is to, you know, the work that's been done so far has really been tremendous in getting out to our residents. And so we're, consider it more of a pilot. I hate to call it that, but for lack of better terms, it's more of a pilot. This program is working really well, and so we're going to see how it goes from there. And if we can find a path forward to sustainable funding, we're going to explore that option. But they are temporary positions as far as we're concerned. So if we aren't able to afford them later on, that's a discussion we'll have to have, but they are grant-funded at the moment.
Counselor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Mr. Hill. So Counselor Sorino asked the first question. The second question I have is, since they're going to be essentially working with us, do we have a say, if this does pass, do we have a say in who gets hired? If someone's going to be working in my ward or Counselor Sorino's ward, Counselor Novoselsky, will we have an opportunity to give input on them?
Madam President, through you to Counselor Cogliandro. So these positions, they're already existing positions. These aren't new positions that we're creating. These aren't new jobs. These folks already work at City Hall, they work downstairs. There is a community outreach liaison's office down in the basement. So we are happy to work with the ward counselors. If there's anyone in particular that you want to work with, we can certainly work on who we're going to, we haven't quite figured out how we're doing the pairings yet, so we'll definitely touch base with you. But also, you can let us know based on the sort of skills that our liaisons have, if there's a certain language need in your specific ward that you really want to cater to, just let us know, and we could do our best to accommodate that as well. Thanks.
Thank you.
Counselor Rizzo?
Thank you, Madam President. Gianni, so first off, I would like the names of who the ambassadors are, if you could email that to me. I would appreciate that. To be quite honest with you, I feel like that's why we have ward counselors, or even counselors at large. You know, this seems like, I mean, you know, the ambassador goes knocking on the door after a car accident. I mean, that happens to be in a counselor's ward, or, you know, we're city counselors, we get calls all the time. I'm just trying to find, I'm just trying to figure where this fits, like, they're going to work with the ward counselors or work, well, you said the ward counselors, but with the city council in general. I just, I'm just a little unclear. I guess going back to what Counselor Sorino had said, you know, if this is, you know, if this is going to be something that we're going to look to sustain, I just don't know why we would do it when people across the city elect a city council to be their representatives. So now City Hall is assigning representatives to wards, and it just doesn't seem, it just doesn't seem like, I don't know, it's just, something just doesn't seem right with me about this. I could understand during COVID, there might have been a need at that point, but going forward with it, I just really don't understand the need for it. If it's grant-funded, that's one thing, where it's not coming out of taxpayer dollars, but truthfully, you know, we get paid here as city counselors. I don't know why we're paying other people to work with ward counselors and help them do their jobs, which I'm more than certain they're very capable of doing themselves. That's just my, that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Morabito?
Thank you. So how much of a grant did we receive?
Madam President, through you to Counselor Morabito. I'm not sure what that number looks like. That'd be a question probably for our CFO, if he has that on hand.
Mr. Viscade? Those particular positions would be funded through the ARPA funds, and that's a $30 million grant.
So it wasn't a specific grant, it was just ARPA funds? So it wasn't an application for specific needs, it was just, we're taking it out of the ARPA funds? You know, let me just say something. We have, and I'm going to have an over-exaggerated comment. We have like about 14 billion candidates running for at-large, school committee mayor. And if you don't think that we're going to be, everyone's going to be knocking on doors and getting information and listening to the people's complaints, you guys are living a pipe dream, because we're going to get the information through the candidates. There's so many candidates out there right now that are knocking on doors. I can't imagine anyone missing a house. So it's like, do we really need a liaison this year?
Madam President, if I may, to respond to Counselor Morabito and also Counselor Rizzo, just a few things here. These already existing positions are in no way intended to replace the work that our counselors are doing, but rather to serve as liaisons between the city council and the city. I know you've asked for, you know, better communication, better outreach to our residents, and that's what we're here to do. We're taking an already existing service and trying to really streamline communication between our city counselors and the city services that we offer. So these ambassadors, these liaisons are not going around knocking on doors asking, "Give us your feedback, tell us what you want us to fix in the city." They're responding in emergency situations to different issues that may arise to make those residents aware of the services that the city offers, the administrative services that we offer as the city of Revere. So it's a little different. All of the ward counselors might not necessarily be aware of all of those resources. For example, we get lots of requests about housing, right, and different issues like that, where folks need transitional housing assistance, that, you know, the average counselor might not have all the wherewithal and knowledge about that. And so we have all of those resources in our office. We're happy to have our liaisons really reach out to the residents. So we just want to use it. When you get information, feel free to send it to the liaison and have them, you know, provide you with the resources that you might need. They're really there to serve as a resource and as a tool for all of you to assist in the work that you're doing. They're not intended to go knocking on doors campaigning and making promises about, you know, a variety of things.
So, can I continue? Through you.
Yes.
So, as of what date were these existing positions?
Counselor Morabito, Madam President, through you to Counselor Morabito. I just wanted to, I'm sorry, I just got up here.
The question is, as of when, what date were these existing positions?
The community liaisons, the current community liaisons, I don't want to use their name because now I feel like, they may feel like they're under attack. The community liaisons that we have in place right now have been working for City Hall for probably well over a year, maybe, maybe, maybe two years. I don't know specific, all of them. They were not hired by myself. They've been working for the city for some time. I think that some of them did begin as COVID ambassadors, as mentioned. At one point, there was in the twenties for COVID ambassadors. There's only currently three community liaisons. Make that, and one that's the, a fourth that's more of in a supervisory role. They are a direct line with 3-1-1. As mentioned, the community liaisons currently are more of the proactive approach to 3-1-1, as opposed to the reactive approach. And I just want to say that, you know, I'm surprised that there's this much feedback. I had spoken to a few ward counselors, as being a former ward counselor. I felt like this was a great support role for the ward councils, but for everyone. They're here for the entire community. One of the big needs that we know is services when it comes to interpretation. So if Counselor McKenna, you're in your ward, and you were having a community meeting that had to do with HYM, or had to do with different events that are happening in your community, non-political, and that was something that I wanted to make sure that we had, they have nothing to do with political events, if Counselor McKenna needed translation services for Spanish or Arabic, she could offer, we could make sure that she's communicating with that liaison and saying, "Hey, on Tuesday night, X, Y, and Z, I would like you to come join with me at this event." That liaison would do that, on top of the role that they're currently doing. So it's just using current City Hall resources to support the counselors as a whole. Obviously, more specifically, we're going to try to use these liaisons to serve two counselors each, more in the ward role, because, quite frankly, I know what it's like. And certainly, language services is something that, I'm not very fluent in many different languages. So that was just one piece. But obviously, from a support role when it comes to materials, sometimes some counselors, I mean, quite frankly, don't have great materials when it comes to print or whatnot. These liaisons could come with great public materials that they can bring to their community meeting, or different events that that counselor is going to be attending in working that support role. So this was really just to help support the entire council. As we know, we're a growing community, there's lots of different events, and, you know, from the motions, you know, as you know, I've been in this role for just a little while, the amount of motions that come through, these are going to help support in that as well. So I thought it was a good thing. They could do nothing, and not do nothing, but they can just stick to doing their regular job. I thought this was a benefit to you, if you don't see it that way. That's quite all right.
Do I still have the floor? So, with all due respect, I appreciate the communication, but why am I just learning that we have liaisons now? And why are we being told about it this day, right now? On top of that-
Is that a question?
We were just having a discussion about doing a comprehensive study on salary positions. So what is this position? 3-1-1 position, an assistant to the ward council, assistant to a councilor at large? What I'm saying is, there's just all this unclarity, and it's just like, why now? You know?
A question. As mentioned, these liaisons have worked for the city for a number of years. I don't know why a counselor, and I'm not, please, no offense, I knew they worked here.
Wait, the only liaison I knew is constituent services in the mayor's office. That's the only liaison I was aware of. I'm not sure if anyone else had, was privy to information.
I can't, Counselor, through you, Madam President, through you to Counselor Morabito. I don't know why he wouldn't know that these employees work here. They've been in the budget for well over a year, so.
Well, with all due respect, just like Mr. Hill came up before us and told us and communicated this, and is offering their services to the ward councils at large, I think this is BS that we weren't told in advance. is BS that we weren't told in advance because you're emphasizing how long these liaisons worked for the city. And we're, we're, we're the elected officials and we don't even know about this. So, and I appreciate that you're telling me now. So let's just leave it at that because we should have known before him.
Counsel, that says more about you than it does about the administration. I apologize. They've been their employees.
Hey, listen, be a little respectful up here, okay?
I'm going to own this, I'm going to shut this down right now and I'm going to give it to Counselor Visconti.
Everything I said was with, with all due respect. So if you can't take the heat, get out of the council chamber. Okay. Thank you, thank you, Madam-
Okay, I'm going to stop this right now because we need to have more respect for each other.
Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Visconti?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the floor. All right, just so we're clear, the three liaisons were in the budget last year as liaisons, okay, being paid through ARPA money. The problem I have is that their job description has all of a sudden changed. And that's not right because at the end of the day, we're looking at it like this was presented by the former mayor in some case in the past, which all of the ward, now I'm not a ward counselor, okay? I'm an at-large counselor, but all the ward councils were offended by the, the actions and what was presented by the former mayor. You know, trying to get some people in the community to be more active in that community and to almost take the place, okay? And I don't want to say that, but similar to being a ward counselor, I know some of the ward counselors had some issues with that. Now to all of a sudden bring those, I'm not even sure if the acting mayor has the ability to change those descriptions. So that's the other question I have. And, and that's the biggest issue I have right now. So they were hired under ARPA money, yes, okay? But they, they were hired to do a job. You all of a sudden, as acting mayor, has changed that and I don't know if that's correct. I don't know if you have the ability to do that or whatnot. So I understand about helping the counselors and all of that, but maybe the counselors don't feel as though they're being pushed aside. And if that's the case, that's wrong. Thank you.
Madam President, if I may, through you to Counselor Visconti. In the letter that you all received last week, I actually copied and pasted the second sentence in there directly from the job descriptions with which the liaisons were hired. So it says here, "In their roles, community outreach liaisons will assist in conducting regular outreach in assigned wards and neighborhoods to increase participation in community events and meetings and in providing direct communication from the city as to key programs, events, and other information." So they were hired with this in their job descriptions already. This was not something that Acting Mayor Keefe just created or changed. We wanted to take advantage of these liaisons based on the needs you all have expressed over the past few meetings and try to provide this service to the council. As Acting Mayor Keefe said, if this is not something that you find suitable or helpful to you, we certainly don't have to offer the service. They can continue to do the work that they do outside in their own outreach, but they were hired to do this job in particular and it's listed in their job description.
Yes, but it, it hasn't been done, okay? And all of a sudden, it's being changed.
It's not being changed.
It is, okay? If it isn't, you wouldn't be coming in front of the council, okay? Asking for that.
Madam President, through you to Counselor Visconti.
I'll take the floor, I have the floor, okay? So at that point, you're changing it without really letting everybody know. If the council is not aware, is not in favor of it, then why do it?
Madam President, through you to Counselor Visconti.
So why, why has it been done, okay? And why has it been enacted without the favorable recommendation of the city council? That's all I'm saying. And I'm not saying that if the ward councils are okay with it, then so be it. But it should be in front of the ward councils and if they have a problem with it, it should be, it should be Xed out. That's it. Thank you.
Madam President, through you to Counselor Visconti. It's, it's already in the job description as I mentioned, there's nothing being changed. These liaisons are already doing the outreach, so we figured we would assign them to wards to be more helpful for you all. Again, if you don't like it, we don't have to do anything. They can continue to do citywide outreach instead of ward-specific, which we thought would be most beneficial to all of you. But if that's not the case and you've expressed that, we're happy to move forward with the work that we've already been doing. Thanks.
Counselor Serino? Counselor Sivestri?
Thank you, Madam President. Maybe Gianni, Acting Mayor. I'm just curious, are these liaisons full-time positions? Are they paid by ARPA funds? Are they paid benefits? Are they part-time positions? How, how does it work?
Okay, they're full-time positions. I just want to state for clarification to everyone, these are current employees.
Yes, oh, no, I knew the liaisons existed. I knew, I've talked to them, I've spoke with them, I knew all about them.
They're real humans.
I know, I know, yeah.
These are full-time employees. I believe that they're offered benefits, correct? And they are through ARPA funding, correct? And just to kind of, a little earlier, I know that the ARPA conversation came up. I'm in full agreement, Counselor Serino, you mentioned it. Creating positions, especially when they're ARPA-funded, they, they do pose a challenge when that ARPA money runs out. And I think that everyone, including the school department, is preparing for that cliff of, that resource running out. I'm very much aware of it and I'm also, it's very, something that I'm keeping in mind when it comes to budgetary needs moving forward, but also knowing that come the 2025 budget, that those positions will either need to be eliminated or folded into the budget. So by no stretch of the imagination do I disagree with you. I very much do. So, but in the meantime, we do have full-time employees right now that work for the city of Revere, whether they're ARPA-funded or not, and they work here. And we're, we're just trying to add to their responsibilities of things that will be serviceable to the community. My full intention, this was my idea, okay? And this is, you know, the question was, why isn't this being, this is what we're doing tonight. This is a communication. Nothing is being done, there hasn't been an implementation of this. We're just communicating it. I spoke with Counselor McKenna, I spoke with Counselor Powers, I spoke with Counselor Novoselsky, I spoke with Counselor Cogliandro. I wasn't able to speak to the other ward counselors and of course, as mentioned, I've reached out to every, every counselor to have scheduled time with myself and I fully intended to. I actually, Counselor McKenna, not to put you on the spot, Madam President, I think I, I thought you loved it. You actually told me you loved it, that was awesome. Counselor, Counselor Novoselsky thought it was great. We also talked about making sure that these relationships are good. These, these liaisons wouldn't be just doing, they're not going to take on any council's role by any, and I know that, but I felt like there would be an unbelievable resource. I saw a few meetings ago, this happened while we were watching a meeting, there was, there was a large conversation about supporting the mayor's staff and the mayor's office and I felt like this would be an unbelievable use of resources that we currently already have. We're already paying these people, we're not paying them a penny more, that they would be able to support the council when it comes to community needs. My mistake. I, I have no problem removing this if, if it's not in the favor of the council, but that's all it was. We're not adding positions, we're not adding any money, we're trying to support the council. There's been, I know, I know that through the former mayor, there wasn't always a great relationship with the city council or some city counselors. I can't speak for the whole. I'm looking to change that, simple as that. And that was why I, I thought this was a great program. I met with our staff in the office and they thought it was great. I met with the 3-1 department, they thought it was great. We have city counselors that don't know how to put a 3-1-1 ticket in. That's okay, we're here to help. And that's part of why this was also a favorable review by our staff. But if, if everyone's against that, I don't want to jam this down anyone's throat. It was a support mechanism, that is it. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Madam President. Let me stipulate that when these people were hired as COVID representatives, it was warranted. Now I remember when the former mayor proposed this so-called ward outreach group and it was met with disdain from the ward counselors because it was another way of the administration controlling the council and controlling the wards. So I, I don't, I don't care what you say and I, and I can see the merits in, in, in some of the outreach, but I see this as more city administration control and, and circumventing what a ward council does. So that's my opinion, that's all I have to offer here is an opinion and, and I certainly don't, I'm not in favor of it and I certainly am not in favor of rolling these positions into the budget. When the ARPA money runs out, the ARPA money runs out. Thank you.
Madam President, through you to Counselor Zambudo. Counselor, I, you have your right to have your opinion. I, there's no ever reason to circumvent the ward council. I'm very, very, there's a, there's a near and dear spot in my heart with ward counselors, you know that. Secondly, I'm not adding to the budget. And lastly, and I'll just say it again, there's no problem, we can scrap this plan. This was just a communication to the council. I, I'm really at a loss for words at the amount of pushback, but that's quite, quite all right. We just wanted to, we just wanted to support. And the last piece is, there's a lot of angst towards prior administration. I get that, I get that. But, you know, we have to start moving on, just like every, we have to start moving on. That old, that person is gone, let's just forget about it, okay?
Just for your information, I've moved on a long time ago.
Likewise.
This, this has to do with the current administration, it has to do with what's going on here. And frankly, I see this as not proper. That's all I'm going to say. I don't want to get into-
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a, just a question. This is ARPA-funded. Is this money allotted for these specific positions through ARPA? I know there was a lot of requirements when we got that funding, so is it, I'm just, I guess my real question is, can we use it for something else? Thank you.
The, the money has, has been appropriated. It was appropriated by the council well over two years ago. So, but, but certainly, if you, if you, if you, if it's not used, and there are positions with people that have left, we haven't really replaced people that have left under ARPA funding unless there was an emergency or true need. And we have made a concerted effort to any ARPA-funded people that do leave or new positions that they put into a general fund budget. But if there's any ARPA funds reserved, we would make sure that they're used towards different uses. Of course, I'll just give you one example. I'm very much more in favor of buying something that's going to give us many years of, of return rather than one annual salary when it comes to ARPA funding. We just purchased three fire trucks for the Revere Fire Department with that, three million, close to $3 million. That's money that we'll, we'll see in perpetuity but via ARPA funding. We've, we've allocated a number of the resources from the ARPA funds towards the water and sewer infrastructure. That's money that we will see for a year, that we'll utilize for years to come. I am very, I feel the same way you do when it comes to positions. We don't want to add to positions and we don't want to continue to spend money that we don't need to. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Counselor Rizzo, please.
Thank you. I, I guess I'll just close with, with more or less of a statement. It, it was said earlier that, that, that these employees, these ambassadors are an extension of 3-1-1 and, you know, but it just doesn't appear to me that they're acting like 3-1-1. 3-1-1, you know, they're going out as emergency response people and I'll go back to what I said before, city counselors are elected by the people in their districts or across the city as we are as at-large counselors. So, you know, and we all get phone calls. We, and I'd rather see these people, instead of going out and responding to whatever these potential emergencies are across the city, expand the hours of 3-1-1, put them up there answering phones. Let them go up there and, and, and give people more of an opportunity to, to call instead of set hours. I mean, in terms of literature and stuff like that, they have more professional literature. I mean, I've been going to neighborhood events for decades. I know, I've gone to other counselors' events. We all have committee people that will show up with us. We don't need city hall support to have a neighborhood meeting. So I think they could be much better spent, I'd like to see the hours of 3-1-1 expanded and maybe use them there. That would be a more benefit to the resident instead of them racing off for a car accident and talking to people about it. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Permission to speak from the chair, please? Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. For me, I would love that because of the fact that we had a couple of big fires in Beachmont and Ward 1. And a lot of the residents, I couldn't speak to them because I couldn't speak Spanish or I couldn't speak Moroccan Arabic or whatever. And to have that asset, to have someone there to speak to these residents, to help, help them wherever it is, I had to call Red Cross, I had to find out how many people were in the house. I couldn't communicate with the people because they were, you know, of Spanish, they were immigrants. So it was very tough for me to communicate. I could, you know, I only speak English, a little bit of Italian, but I only speak English. So I think that would help. I don't feel intimidated to have an assistant beside me as a ward counselor and them going to take over my job. I don't feel intimidated. And the other thing is, they're getting paid by ARPA, so once that money runs out, then the jobs run out. But right now, the city's not paying for that. It's, it's, you know, so I think once the money runs out, then the jobs run out. But I'm, I, I like it, I do. I'm sorry that a lot of you don't agree with me, but I don't speak any other languages but English. Right? Why don't you? That's what they do. I want the wish of the committee to, the council to tell me what to, place on file, place on file.
Calendar item, we're onto motions. Calendar item number 19, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the acting mayor direct the chief of police to increase patrols at the intersection of Elm Street and Sewell
Counselor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Madam President. Speaks for itself.
All in favor? All opposed? So awarded.
Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Counselor Zambudo that the following amendment to the zoning map of the city of Revere be ordered to a public hearing on June 26th and ordinance further amending the zoning map of the city of Revere, section 1. The zoning map of the city of Revere is hereby amended by changing the zoning district designation of map block parcel 3-23-2A from residential B to technology enterprise district.
Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Madam President. This is going to a public hearing. I think we'll save my comments for that evening. Thank you.
Madam President.
Counselor Novoselsky?
Through you to the council, can you tell me where this parcel is?
The VFW, Beachmont.
Can I, can I ask again, why are we doing this?
I, I'd rather discuss it after the public hearing.
Yes, I'm going to refer this to a public hearing on June 26th. You're welcome.
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Counselor Visconti that the acting mayor request a representative from HYM or a representative from the summer concert team to appear before the city council to discuss the weekend traffic plans during the concerts.
Counselor Visconti?
Thank you, Madam President. It's my understanding that there's going to be traffic after the summer, after the summer concerts will end, will be directed into Revere, right on to Revere Beach Parkway, from what I was told, and, which I, which is going to create more traffic on the Revere side. I know this because the East Boston Orient Heights community had a community meeting about the traffic and really created some concerns about the traffic going through their neighborhoods and really didn't want it going through their neighborhoods. So come to find out that it's being directly, it's being directed right into Revere Beach Parkway, which is right into the Revere neighborhoods, which I really have a concern about. I'm just curious on why there wasn't any, if there was any community meetings for the city of Revere I wasn't aware of, you know? And obviously, speaking to you, Council President, I, I know that it's in your ward, so you don't let anything go without knowing about it, so- So, that's why I checked with you. Maybe I missed it, but come to find out that there was no meeting had with the people that are running the summer concerts, and it's just unfortunate that Riviere side is gonna take the blunt of this. I don't know why, and I'm curious to know who approved it. So, and that's my, that's my question. So, I'd like some more information on it, you know? So, I don't know who's here to answer or what the situation is, but I'm curious to know who approved it. You know, was there a plan in place presented to the city council or the city? I know nothing of it, so, and I'm not sure if any of the other councils know anything about it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? All in?
So, I think I was informed when they were gonna build a new outdoor stadium. I think we all knew they were gonna do concerts outside. But as far as the feedback I'm getting from residents in Riviere is they're excited. They're excited for entertainment in Riviere. They're exciting for something to do in the city. But I, and I understand we need to look at the traffic situation, but at the same time, I wouldn't discourage an event like this.
No, no, I guess you're missing my point.
I'm not. You're concerned about the traffic, but I'm just-
I'm glad to hear that, I'm glad to hear that there are some things going on that the residents of Riviere can finally enjoy. Okay? That's not my problem. My problem is that East Boston had a community meeting specifically about the traffic. They didn't want it going through their area. That's the Orient Heights area. I know that for a fact. Okay? So, they're pushing it all towards the Riviere side. Did you know, if you knew about it, I didn't know about it, okay?
I just knew about the events, but-
Well, we all knew about the events.
But as far as traffic, did you talk to anyone from the Traffic Commission?
I'm just finding this information out.
All I'm saying is, let's not discourage an event like this that's something good for Riviere.
This counselor-
But your motion, your motion is about traffic, right?
It's not about the event. I'm saying, why isn't it being pushed through East Boston rather than Riviere? That's all. That's simple. That's all. You know, why do they have to go through Riviere? Why aren't they going through East Boston? That's it. Has nothing to do with the event. Thank you.
Counselor Silvestri?
Thank you, Madam President. I think the motion warrants some looking into. The only thing that I'm a little surprised is, the grandstand at Suffolk Downs was the largest grandstand in the nation. 16,000-plus people could fit in there. The venue for the concerts, I think, is 8,000 seats. From what I'm understanding, when those venues let out, everything's gonna be pushed into Riviere. It's gonna be forced into Riviere, then no one's gonna be able to leave out into the other side of the highway?
I, oh. Shift from the chair, please. I do think that you can use Thomas Solo, Thomas Solo in, I don't know the name of the other street, but I think you can go out that way.
I was told, I was told it isn't going through the East Boston section. So, and that's, you know, that's specifically what was done.
No, I agree. If they're pushing it all-
They're pushing it all through Riviere Beach Parkway.
Counselor Serrino?
Thank you, Madam President. I was just gonna say, if these concerts are on the weekends, it's obvious that the Sumner Tunnel is gonna be closed. So, that's probably why, again, you know, I'm sure they're gonna be great events, but here Riviere will get screwed again, that all that traffic, through no fault of HYM most likely, but just the circumstances of the tunnel being closed is probably why they're, and of course, Orient Heights, when Orient Heights speaks, you know, they won't, they'll probably make them not be able to turn right when you get out of, you know, when you come down by the bakery there and going toward East Boston. So, hopefully, at least they'll open that up to allow traffic to flow into East Boston that way.
Counselor Rizzo?
I, just one statement, and I'm not sure if they're already doing it or planning on doing it, but similar to what they used to do at Suffolk Downs during peak period, similar to what they used to do at Wonderland, maybe we could speak to HYM and have police officers pulling traffic and just keeping it moving, keeping it moving, and emptying it out, because if we're gonna leave it to the individuals themselves trying to get in and out of there, I think that's when it's gonna get real crazy. It'll be crazy anyway with the closing of the Sumner Tunnel, but we need to be pulling traffic. We just can't let it go on its own, in my opinion.
Excellent, Counselor. Any other counselors? Counselor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Madam President. This is, I go to a lot of concerts, a lot of sporting events. I mean, that's a lot of people to be funneling out one way into our city. And not only that, we have to think about our resources for our police department. Who's gonna be guiding all this traffic out? So, those are my concerns, and as Counselor Silvestri said, this definitely warrants being looked into. Thank you.
On the motion? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 22, motion presented by Counselor Silvestri that the acting mayor request the chief of police to appear before the city council to discuss the Riviere Police Department and Massachusetts State Police plans in crowd, I'm sorry, in place for crowd control, riot control, or mass shootings at events in or large crowds, specifically at Riviere Beach. Additionally, that the chief of police provide a response as to why Riviere Beach was not closed and cleared immediately after two people were shot and several other people were injured from assaults.
Counselor Silvestri?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, in one month and two days, it will be the 23rd anniversary of myself being shot in downtown Boston in Faneuil Hall. I was a victim of violent crime. I was in the wrong place at the wrong time. I was leaving a nightclub, and there was a gang initiation happening, and I ended up being shot. That night, Faneuil Hall, State Street, all the surrounding areas were shut down instantly. Cars couldn't pass, patrons couldn't pass. My issue, and I'm not trying to politicize, I'm not trying to point fingers, but my issue that night was command and control. Our police officers over the radio seemed like they had great command and control, but there seemed like there was no leadership. And I get that that's the state police's area, and they should take it. And what I, what I wanna try to figure out here is how we come up with a plan, a mass shooting plan, a riot plan, a beach plan, that when local cities from Chelsea, Lynn, Malden are called into Riviere, they know that they're going to the old banana boat because there's gonna be someone from the state police there to direct them, not have to just drive to the beach, you tell me, I gotta go here, then I'm telling you to go there, because that's what was happening. And two hours after we had several victims shot, they were still literally partying on social media on the Boulevard, and that was shocking to me. And that's when I think we need some answers. I don't wanna politicize this. I don't wanna point fingers. Mr. Keefe is acting mayor. This is not your fault. Chief Callahan, this is not your fault. I believe this really falls on the state police, their lack of manpower and their lack of control that night, and that's where we need some answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Counselor Visconti?
I first wanna thank the Riviere Police Department and the state police for actually, you know, trying to control a situation that, with the amount of people that the state police had, was basically impossible to control. Okay? If you look at those videos that were out on social media, it's pretty scary. And yes, I completely agree with Counselor Silvestri that, you know what, the situation-
Excuse me. Hold on, please. Can we stop in the audience and be respectful to the Counselor? Thank you.
For the lack of manpower that these people had that night, they were in jeopardy for their own lives as well. And I would like some answers on that as well and see what was going on. And you know what? Something happened. Somebody dropped the ball, and, you know, it's evident. This is a situation that has happened over and over for the last few years. Once, the first day of summer or the, right around that area, when you get an 80-degree day, 90-degree day, it's something that transpires all the time. Last year, there was a stabbing. This year, there were three people shot. Three people shot. There was one woman that was shot, and she was cleaning off the sand. Let's just put that in perspective. She was cleaning off the sand from her body, leaving, and she was just shot, you know, by a stray bullet. That's pretty scary. So, you know what? Yes, answers have to be done, have to be, there have to be answers for what took place. My, I have certain questions that I want answered as well, you know? For example, was there a public plan in place, okay, prior to the Memorial Day weekend? That's what I wanna know. If there was, then something went wrong, and I'm just trying to understand what went wrong, okay? So that if you go out there and you talk to some of the residents, they don't wanna travel to Riviere Beach, and I don't blame them. It's pretty scary. Imagine having kids there, your kids, you're just enjoying the day, and you get hit by a stray bullet. That's pretty, that's what could happen. This is not grandstanding. This is not politicizing it. It's public safety. It is public safety, and you look at those videos, I'm asking, where are we?
We had a child killed.
Okay? That, that is scary. So, my question, my question, my question to the acting mayor is, was there a plan in place, okay, a public safety plan in place to accommodate and try to work through this situation? If not, I wanna know why. That's all. And what is the plan moving forward? Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor, Counselor, Acting Mayor, Keefe?
Thank you, Madam President. I know that some of the questions are a little bit, I wouldn't say redundant, but they're, the two motions sort of align, so if it's okay, if I may, to answer my part based on both of the motions. First off, Counselor Silvestri, I didn't know that story about you, and I'm glad that you, you're still here with us today. I know that you've been through a lot of things in life, so one new topic.
Can we order, order in this? Can we have a two-minute recess, please? Mayor Keefe, Mayor, Acting Keefe?
Acting Mayor, please.
Acting Mayor Keefe?
Thank you.
Am I all right?
Thank you, Madam President. Would you like me to go? Okay. Well, thank you, Counselor Silvestri, and thank you, Counselor Visconti. I know that this motion, it's absolutely warranted. I showed up, I went down there on Sunday night, the 28th. Certainly waited for things to die down, only because I did not wanna be a distraction. I witnessed Boston, Everett, Chelsea, Lynn, Swam Scott, the MBTA, state police, and other partners. I talked to officers on, from the Riviere side that night. Officer O'Hearn and Papstador, Officer O'Hearn issued a tourniquet to the woman that was shot. I commend him and Officer Papstador, that's been on the force for less than six months, for their valiant efforts. I witnessed the chaos of the scene firsthand. It was nothing that we, you know, when I got the call, 7 o'clock, there was a pit in my stomach, and I went down there and waited, off to the side, and make sure everyone did their job first. I was in constant communication with Chief Callahan all day long on Sunday, because I drove by the beach at 3:30. I was in constant communication with Officer Callahan, Chief Callahan, the weeks prior. There was a senior skip day that was scheduled, I believe, two Fridays or one Friday prior, and I was alerted of it, and I said, "Chief, I wanna make sure that what happened last year, we do our best to make sure that we're mitigating this from happening." Obviously, knowing that there's nothing that we can ever do, there's no plan that we can ever have that will prevent anything from happening. We can only do our best, and the city can only do its best in working with its partnerships. So, that, the weeks leading up to the heat of the summer, as we know that first hot days tend to always bring something bad out, I was in communication with our chief of police and also in communication with the state police and the DCR to make sure that they do have a plan in place. They assured me that there is a plan in place and was a plan in place, and quite frankly, things still happened. Moving forward, this last Thursday, we had the colonel from the state police, who oversees the entire state, the commander and lieutenant from the state police barracks in Riviere, and pretty much the entire top brass, along with Lieutenant, I'm sorry, Captain Randall, Chief Callahan, and Representative Turco, and a few others to go over plans moving forward. While I'm not at the liberty to discuss the exact, specific plan, what we do, we did recognize that there probably needs to be an adjustment when it comes to the resources that are allocated to the beach, knowing that if this is going to be the recurring theme, that the adjustments need to be made. So, I have full faith in Chief Callahan and his team to work with the state police to make sure that we're doing the best that they can with the resources they have to make sure that we have a welcoming beach for all, and we have great activities, and we certainly, none of us, including you, no one on this council wishes to see events like Sunday happen. And we've done a lot in this city over the last 20 years to bring that beach up to a standard. We've done a lot to reimage that beach, and we know that when we have events like Sunday, it just takes all that work away, so we have to continue to build trust within our community. I've spoken to a lot of community members to make sure that they know that we are doing the best job, and we, and again, Chief Callahan will answer the questions on the specifics. The state police, they did, they did all join us on Thursday. They aren't unable to make it here tonight, but they will be sending a statement that I will forward to the council when- I will forward to the council when that statement comes in. If they are able to attend a later meeting, we'll be happy to accommodate that and make that happen. But I do have Chief Callahan and, and, uh, Captain Randall up here to, to talk of any specifics when it comes to the plan that was in place and the plan in place moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Acting Mayor Keith.
Madam President.
Counsel Silvestri.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for coming up here, Chief. Um, as I said, I, I, I commend the, the, the men and women of the Revere Police Department and the efforts they put in. Um, and, and as I said, it was a little scary seeing the, the lack of command and control. Um, I guess my questions for you, Chief, are, and, and, and the Acting Mayor suggested there is, is there a plan in place? What is the plan? And what happened to that plan on, on Sunday evening?
Well, Counsel Silvestri, I, I can say one thing, that sometimes there's a misconception or a, a thought, the Revere Beach Boulevard and Ocean Avenue, that's state property.
Absolutely.
That's controlled by the DCR and the Massachusetts State Police.
Absolutely.
We assist them, but we absolutely don't have the resources to control that area that they have. We're at about a hundred and four people for a police department. The Massachusetts State Police is over two thousand.
Mm-hmm.
And they have a lot more resources than we do. And, you know, that particular evening where things went bad, and it was not nice at all, and i- it's very disturbing, they had resources there. What their plan was, I don't know. They told me they had a plan, they had resources, we're going to have people there in that area that'll be on the beach.
So, I, I hate to equate this to nine eleven, so I'm not going to say it's like nine eleven, but as in nine eleven, we seen, um, the, the agencies of the country have to start communicating better because of that incident. Is there something in place now that, that you, the State Police, uh, and, and the other police departments from around the, the surrounding neighborhoods and, and, and cities know when they, because what was happening, Chief, it seemed like the police were coming in from other cities, but they would just, uh, it, it, I wasn't there, but it seemed on the radio, they would identify a police officer, and they would just beeline it to that police officer. And instead of, like, then you had, I, I could understand, it was Michael, Officer Travato on the radio, um, he was controlling people but sending, "Hey, you go and you meet the State Police down this end," and, and it just seemed like there was no other control besides what the Revere cops were doing, and, and I got to commend them all for it. And, and, and it just seems, I, I agree with you, you know? One video that really was disturbing to me, um, again, it was probably about two hours after the first couple shootings, um, they were still dancing inside, uh, the, the, the grandstand in the gazebo. Um, a, a female started to get her head literally stomped on by three males. And in the back of the video, State Troopers were walking to that scene. They, they were literally, they could see what was happening, but they walked there. And that, that was disappointing, Chief, I, I got to say, and I know you don't control the State Police, but, um, I, I think they need to do a better job, they need to step up the manpower. We all know someone at DCR now, maybe he can help out with the governor and ask for more patrolling on the beach during the summers and, and to keep the violence down. I don't, I don't know the answer, but I do know there needs to be something discussed and, and some better communication, Chief. Thank you.
Counsel Silvestri, may I speak through you?
Yes.
Uh, listen, I, I speak to them on a daily basis. This has been something that I'm always concerned about. I've worked here for over thirty years, and we always have a problem in the beginning of the summer. And I have spoken to the barracks commander, I spoke to him that day, I spoke to him during the week, I have spoken to the, the people who are in charge of the barracks there frequently. Several times a week, we talk. And I was assured that they were going to have adequate resources there. It's all set. And unfortunately, what transpired on Sunday was awful. A searing, terrible event that happened, and it's memorialized on video with some of the gunfire and stuff like that. It's very disturbing. And myself and the mayor talk frequently, and he's very concerned about the beach, and he has been for a very, very long time. They, always asking about it, like you folks have in the past as well. And it's something we're concerned about. But like I said, the problem is, it's state property. They patrol it, they control it, they have the barracks there, they have the resources. And we have a lot less limited resources than they have. And we have to be careful, too, that we don't neglect other areas of the city. And on that particular night, it took most of the Patrol Division down there to assist. And the men and women did a fabulous, outstanding job, from dispersing groups to assisting victims, to, pursuing suspects. So they hit every gamut that they could on that particular night. Just, it's terrible. Unfortunate event. And I don't have a lot of answers to your questions.
I-
In some of those-
I understand, and, and, and like I said, Chief, I, I commend the, the men and women of the Revere Police Department, um, but, but I do, I, I hope you can keep that pressure on the State Police Commander and, and, and to keep them putting the manpower on the beach for the remainder of the summer, because we deserve a beach that we can be safe at. Um, and, and I appreciate you being up here tonight. Thank you, Chief.
No, a- absolutely, and, and I'll just, they have their CAT team, their Community Action Team, probably six or eight guys on it, dedicated patrols that are strictly just enforcement, and they work out of this troop, which is Troop H. They focus a lot of times around Revere. They were here that particular night, and what other resources they had were there. And apparently, it just wasn't adequate. Things kind of got overwhelming.
Thank you. Counselor Serrino?
Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Rizzo. You are next. Sorry.
Thank you very much, Madam President. So let me just start off by saying, I mean, certainly, our local police department did a great job, and I also believe our State Police Department did a great job, and our surrounding communities that came, uh, to provide mutual aid all did a great job under a very difficult set of circumstances. One of the things I've been saying for a long time, we, uh, I remember a year or two ago, we were, uh, some, for some reason, the city was ecstatic, we were the fastest-growing city, uh, in the Commonwealth, yet a hundred and four police officers that you just mentioned is what we budgeted for in our FY twenty sixteen budget. I don't know how you have the same number of police officers, you know, th- this is a problem that we have, okay? That's not specifically addressing what happened last week on the beach, but it's a, but it's a problem that needs to be addressed in this city if we're going to keep our city safe. The people that live on Revere Beach pay a lot of money to live there, and residents across this city pay a lot of money to live where they do. And we've got roads that are controlled by the state, we've got, you know, and, but we're all in this together. Our police departments are in together, and it comes down to communication. I've talked to members of law enforcement on both sides, uh, or in, in, in several departments since this incident happened. And there's a serious lack of communication, I believe, from what I'm told. Um, that needs, that needs to change. A lot of people that were down that beach came here by train. We need to talk with the general manager of the MBTA and get their transit police officers on board to let us know when you have massive amounts of people coming in our direction so we're prepared for this. Um, this, this seems to be a reoccurring event, and this time, it really escalated to gunfire with stray bullets going around. I mean, you know, we want our beach, it's a national historic landmark, to be a, a great source of passive recreation for our residents, and really, residents across the Commonwealth who choose to come here. But certainly for our residents, they should feel safe when they go down there, and there really needs to be an effort. I mean, summertime isn't a secret. It, you know, it comes every year at the same time. And so we need to be better prepared. Now, I don't know if you've had any conversations since this event with the State Police, have you been in contact with them since? And is there going to be, uh, a more concerted effort to stem off this, this influx of people that are ruining it for the, uh, regular, everyday people that just want to go and enjoy the beach? Are you having conversations with the State Police and Transit Police about this?
Yes. First, can I start with, you talked about staffing levels. You talked about the police department being at a hundred and four. We're currently budgeted for a hundred and ten, okay? We currently have a hundred and four, but we're in the process of some retirements, other people out injured, things going on. So currently, we usually have ten to fifteen percent of the place out for different reasons. Medical leave, pending retirement, uh, FMLA, vacation, military leave, things like that. So that i- i- is very challenging. This upcoming budget, I'm trying to add five more positions to put us up to a hundred and fifteen.
So that's what's in the budget right now, a hundred and fifteen?
We're trying to add it to one fifteen, and we currently have seven in the police academy. But just currently, it's a very challenging environment to hire police officers. Every single law enforcement agency in the country is struggling to hire. They're struggling to retain. People are retiring, people are, we've had some dynamite candidates go through the whole process, great stellar candidates, change their mind, "Sorry, I'm going to go into another field of work." So those are all challenging things that we've never seen before. Usually, with a civil service list that comes down when they give the exam, and you, you're aware of that, that, that you'll have five, six, seven hundred residents on the list. We're lucky if we get fifty. And then after you vet them, we may be lucky with ten. It's just very challenging, challenging times, and it's throughout the entire workforce, and especially in law enforcement. So that's one thing to answer your question there. When you talk about the State Police, I've had a lot of communication with them. Even on that particular day, I reached out to the lieutenant, and he said he was on the way down there, that they had the major down there, and things were under control. As the day went on, I was hearing things are getting busier. I was contacted by a couple of people that, "Hey, things may be going on down there, there seems to be more and more of a crowd." And see, the issue was, too, social media. Everything travels so fast. And they have these things planned. And there was other events that were posted on social media, they thought there was going to be a problem at the beach, they put the resources there, nothing happens. Unfortunately, something happened on that particular evening. But go back to where I said I was getting the information, I took it upon myself, and like I said, and I'll say it again, that is not the sole jurisdiction of the Revere Police Department. That is covered by the Massachusetts State Police. I took it upon myself to reach out to different area chiefs and let them know, "I hope nothing happens, but if we do have a problem down the Revere Beach, do you have any extra guys? Or just let your officer in charge know that if there's a problem down Revere Beach, that you would authorize them to come and help?" Every chief I spoke to said, "Absolutely. If they need anything, reach out to us, or the State Police will reach out to us. We'll at least let the officer in charge know that there may or may not be a problem down the beach." So that was very helpful. But unfortunately, this incident happened. And sometimes, we can't always prevent them, and you can have a thousand people come somewhere and not have a problem. You have a handful of instigators, and they can disrupt things rapidly, and things deteriorate quickly. And now we're in another problem. In society right now, the younger people are very prevalent to carry firearms. Not afraid, not afraid at all. And lately, we've recovered a lot of firearms from people. Just recently, detectives got information about a gentleman who may have a gun that was involved in an incident somewhere, they get him the next morning. Sure enough, he's got the gun on him. Under arrest, and he's out on bail on other significant charges. So it's very challenging. And, and I'll just give you some information. In the last year, we ran into two different ghost gun manufacturing, or enterprises that were in residence in this city. And what I'm talking about are ghost guns, uh, guns that are untraceable. There's no serial numbers on them, they buy the parts, they get around the law, and the people put them together. And in one particular incident, they had a assault rifle that was fully automatic. How do we keep up with that? How do we keep up with that? You can't track them. You can't track the firearms. And there's no fear of being arrested or prosecuted.
No.
It, we had another incident we did with the ATF on somebody who's a legitimate firearms dealer. We seized over a hundred firearms from this gentleman, and stuff, they're still trying to track what he was buying and selling, and who he was selling it to. And there was no fear with the young people of walking around carrying an illegal firearm. There is none. And it's very concerning. And it's a bigger issue than Revere Beach, and I know it's awful what happened on Revere Beach, but if you watch the news, there's been some crazy incidents in Boston and other cities. That same weekend, we had the incident in Revere, there was another one in Florida. Nine people shot. Chicago, same thing. It's just, we're in very challenging times.
Hey, look, I, I, I totally empathize with that, and that's why I've been an advocate for more and more and more police officers. I know you're saying we're going to budget this year, and that's great, but as it stands today, we got a hundred and four police officers in a growing city with, by your own admission and by our own understanding, a more violent society. So we need to step it up. We, it, it, it's, you know, I, I mean, there's ju, there's got to be a solution to this. And, and that's why I'm speaking on this motion right now, is to say, you know, number one, more, more, uh, 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 ex, you know, exchanging of information with our local law enforcement agencies. We've got a lot of different law enforcement agencies that operate throughout this city. I mean, I don't know, is the North Shore Gang Task Force still in place, or have they disbanded, or are they still around?
Yeah, listen, I mean- We communicate with all of them, Counselor. And I know people feed you information, but they feed you what you want to hear or what they want you to hear.
I seek, I seek out my own information, because public safety is a huge issue for people, especially today in this city. I mean, take away the, take away the, you know, you know, like the shooting, I don't think I've had a day go by when someone hasn't had their car broken into. So these are just regular proactive-type policing situations that I hear from residents. It's not, and I'm not, I'm not being fed anything, it, this is, you know, right now, while the, while these motions are on the table, they're not my motions, I'm speaking on them because you're here and, and the acting mayor is here, and I just want to make sure that the residents of this community know that we have a plan in place to keep them safe. That's all. I mean, that's what these motions seem to ask for, and that's why I'm speaking on them. I, I know what you're up against, and I, and, and look, I mean, you know, I give, my hat's off to anybody that stays or comes into law enforcement these days, because it, it never was an easy job. It's not, it's certainly not an easy job today. But we just need adequate staffing, adequate sharing of information, and so that these flash mobs that just pop up, you know, especially coming, I mean, I, I don't know how many Revere residents were in that mob that you had to break up. I would suspect very few. I think most of them probably came from out of town. And, and, you know, I mean, we have to know that this wave is coming our way. And so, you know, that's all I'm saying. We need to just be a little bit more aware of how a situation can get out of control. I know, we, you know, law enforcement monitors social media sites, right? You know, you see it coming, I know you said, "Well, you know, sometimes we're prepared and it doesn't happen." Well, sometimes it does, right? So, you know, we just need to be, I, I, I think there needs to be a better exchange between all the law enforcement agencies we have that are operating in our community. That's, that's all I have.
Counselor?
I'm not, I'm not looking-
No, 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 Counselor, I would like to respond.
Sure.
We have a crime analyst that monitors social media. I speak to her multiple times a week, or if not daily, to keep an eye on the social media. She does. Okay? We deal with the Fusion Center, that's mainly the State Police, and we deal with the, the BRIC, the Boston Regional Intelligence Center, that feeds us information. And you tell me, in a holiday weekend, "I was calling Chiefs of Police and they were answering the phone." Okay? So there was communication. And I communicate with the State Police and multiple other agencies on a regular basis.
Okay.
So that, that, I, listen, I don't sleep at night because of the stuff that goes on and how concerned and passionate I am over this community.
Well, I just want our residents to be able to sleep at night, to be quite honest with you.
We're trying to-
I mean, they're, it's the residents that we're elected by, and it's the residents that, 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 that want to sleep at night and feel safe, that's all. I'm not looking to get confrontational, Chief.
No, I'm not looking to get confrontational either.
This is, I'm looking just for a solution.
Listen.
I, I, I want to be able to, to know, and I want our residents to feel comfortable, that we have a plan, and look, this was a one-off now, I mean, you know, this, something went awry last weekend, Memorial Day weekend, I mean, you know, who would have thought, you know, there would have been a major crowd down there? I, but, you know, I mean, just, just, you know, uh, we all want to know. I think some of these motions are speaking to, what's the plan, and how are we going to handle it going forward? That's all. This doesn't, I don't think anyone in the city council is looking for a confrontation. We want to work together and try to-
No.
And try to, and try to make it, make it, uh, uh, a situation where our residents that live on the beach, and our residents who want to visit the beach, can go down there and feel safe. And whether that means more State Police protection, whether that means more- state police protection, whether that means more input from the transit police, whether it means more, you know, offices on, you know, or more staffing levels, whatever it is. I know, I always speak for myself, I'm all in on whatever it is. So whatever we need to do, I'm all in favor of. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
No, listen, I'm in full agreement as well. But I think sometimes the information's not accurate, and we share, and we try to do the right thing, always, okay? The calls for service are down, but our arrests are up. Right? So we're trying to address these issues, and it's not easy. We're doing more with less. Every division in the police department is down, because of different reasons. Medical leave, all the stuff I explained earlier, so it's not easy. And what's gone on in the last three years, since 2020, that awful thing that happened out in Minnesota punished law enforcement throughout the country. I had two guys retire because they said they had enough. The phone putting foot in their face. Time for, the guy said, "I, I think I'm gonna retire, I can't do it anymore." So we, of course, we wanna do it together, Counselor, but...
Thank you, Chief.
You know, it's challenging.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Serino?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, first, through you to the chief, I wanna acknowledge that the hard job that law enforcement has right now, and that people don't respect the authority that...
Because of what you're teaching in the school, that's why they don't respect the authority.
Okay, I'm not trying to go on a political diatribe. I'm just, I just wanna give kudos to our police department and our state troopers that do tremendous work in our community day in and day out. So that was the first point that I wanted to make. Counselor Silvestri had asked a couple of the questions that I had regarding a plan and a plan moving forward, and specifically, you know, we're about seven weeks out from the International Sand Sculpting Festival with, you know, we're gonna be expecting five hundred thousand to seven hundred and fifty thousand people over the course of those three or four days. And I know there are meetings, public safety meetings, leading up to that. I remember, you know, we'd be in them and whatnot. But I would just ask that you really relate to the state troopers, the state, the state police, that, you know, we definitely need something more than what has been done in past years. And with regard to just some comments that I thought of, when I saw a video at one point, then Counselor Silvestri had sent it to me, of the mob of people in the bandstand. And obviously, it's difficult to get people off the beach, but when they're crowded in that bandstand the way that they were, that's even more troubling. And I know, you know, that's obviously state jurisdiction, but if you could bring back to the state police and the DCR my suggestion that perhaps they put a gate or a fence on the steps at the base of the bandstand to prevent people who aren't authorized from going up into it, to try to prevent people from, you know, gathering inside of it. That's, that was just number one. And number two, when the, especially during the sand sculpting festival, but maybe during, you know, the height of the summer months period, we should be doing this, could we work with the MBTA to put metal detectors coming out onto the beach at Revere Beach and Wonderland? I know it's impossible to shut the tee down, and people need that to get to and from work and places, but at least if we had a, you know, metal detectors, maybe that would be some sort of deterrent coming onto Revere Beach. So just some comments that I'm hoping you can take back to the state police.
Yeah, Counselor, absolutely. And the idea, when you talked about the bandstand, that was something that was thought of and discussed, and maybe they should address something. When the bandstand is not being used, secure it so no one can get on it. And the thing with the metal detectors, I'm not sure that's something we'd have to speak with the MBTA, and I'm sure that would have some constitutional issues and other things, but...
Thank you. Counselor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Chief Callahan, thank you for being here tonight, sir. So you actually just mentioned the MBTA, and I think Counselor Rizzo alluded to it as well. What kind of communication do we have with the transit police? Because me personally, I feel a preventative measure that could be taken is just as simple as a phone call to let somebody know, there's hundreds of kids getting on the train to come to Revere. That's all.
We were never notified, and I do not know if the state police were notified. And I know the MBTA, they're having their own challenges with manpower and things like that. Because a lot of times on the blue line of this end, my understanding is that there's limited resources, because a lot of it is in Boston. And I've had conversations with supervisors over at the MBTA, because we take a lot of their calls. The Wonderland Train Station is very big, and it's almost like a hub at the beginning of the blue line. So we assist them frequently there. Either they don't have the manpower in the area, or they're sending somewhere, someone from somewhere else. So we're secured, and we'll take care of them.
Even, even someone on staff, the person you would go, you know, talk to for customer service or whatever, just, just communication, let somebody know that there's a ton of people getting on the train heading in a direction. That's all, you know, just a thought.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Visconti?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick follow-up, Chief. First, thanks for reaching out to the other community chiefs to try to get the, you know, reacting to the issue and trying to get it under control. I guess my, my, my question to you is, I know during the sand sculpting festival, we always, as, we always have RPD onsite, and that has been an ongoing thing, where I know there's details and overtime, whatever the case may be, to try to accommodate, you know, the crowd. And I know it's not that type of crowd, it wasn't that many people. But it seems as though the plan that was in place that, that evening was based on the six state police troopers that were just there, you know? And if that's the case, I guess my question was, you know, knowing that something like this typically happens on a hot summer day, and I don't wanna play Monday morning quarterback by any stretch of the imagination, but why, why wasn't there some more Revere police presence? And I know you're fighting a difficult situation with manpower, that goes without saying. But why wasn't there a plan? Because it just seems as though, you know, you know, in speaking, when Acting Chief, Acting Mayor Keefe was up there, that there was a plan. It just seems as though that the plan in place was to have those six state troopers there. And if that was the plan in place, you know, I guess, you know, that, that wasn't doable, you know, at that point. And I, you know, it was all reactionary. Why wasn't there a little bit more police presence on, on the Revere side is really what my, my question to you is. You know, why wasn't there some overtime? And I know it's not easy. And, and, you know, but, you know, did we utilize all measures possible to try to avoid that? That's all. Thank you.
Counselor, it's a good question. The state police, they had their resources, they had their community action team there, and I don't know what other assets they had there. So I don't wanna be taken as gospel, 'cause I don't know exactly what their plan was. And like I said, in an event like this, where they had the, you know, a hot afternoon, we just don't have the resources to commit on Revere Beach every single hot afternoon. If you have an event, when we do the events, we force the other shifts in at double time. And on this particular night, on that Sunday night, when things started getting active, the lieutenant called in the overnight shift in early. And we had other officers in on overtime to cover staffing issues. And we ran with our normal staffing number, but you gotta understand, too, we have the entire city to deal with. And that's what the thing is. And it's very challenging. You can't, we can't get all the resources tied up in that small area and then have no one to respond to any other call in any other part of the city. And there was some officers, the east side officers on the end of the city responded down there, as well as some other officers. But we had to leave some free to cover the other end of the city. Did I answer your question?
It does. It's still, I don't, I don't think it puts the residents at ease. And I understand the, the issue that you, you face. It's, it's, it's not, it's a difficult issue to, to combat. So I understand that. It's just, I think, on a residence basis, you, you look at it and saying, the fact that, you know, we were understaffed at that time to try to combat the issue with the state police, and we, we didn't have, I guess, we were all reactionary, and we didn't have enough presence there to try to have the people that were coming in off the train station think twice about doing what they were doing. And that's, it's, it's no fault to, to you, Chief. I understand what you're up against, and I, and I do respect that. So this is not something that, I, I think it's a problem, you know, but it, it just seems to me that the plan that was in place is to let the state police, the six state police handle the situation. And if that's what they wanted to do, I, I just don't think it was too effective. That's all.
Well, like I said before, and I'll say it again, it's a state police jurisdiction. They cover it, they patrol it. We assist them, but we don't have sole jurisdiction down there. They do, they have a barracks. And they have a lot of resources. They can call people in from other barracks that we don't have. We don't have the ability. They can call people in from the rest of the troop, they can pull them in from another troop. We just don't have that.
The only thing I could say is hopefully going forward, there's a more aggressive plan to try to avoid something like this happening again. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Madam President, question of information. I, we don't have joint jurisdiction down there? That's sole jurisdiction of the state police?
We have jurisdiction in the dwellings. And we also have some jurisdiction there. But the thing is, they are the main law enforcement authority that covers the property down there. We will assist them, but we're not committed there a hundred percent. We have the rest of the city to patrol. You know, if you wanna say we have a dual jurisdiction, yes. But their primary responsibility is to cover the beach and Ocean Avenue. That is not our primary responsibility. We'll assist them when we can, but it, it comes on manpower.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, to be quite honest, you know, I, I've always viewed that, as long as I've been sitting here as a public official, as a place that provides joint jurisdiction. Like, you're talking about dwellings, yeah, I mean, that's kinda split in hairs. I mean, you know, yeah, we'll, we'll have the dwelling side, but, you know, you got thousands of people across the street shooting guns. I mean, it seems to me there's a little line there. And I, and listen, to go back to the staffing, I get it, but just to keep hearing that it's a state police jurisdiction is, it's just kinda, every time you say it, it's kinda just hitting me the wrong way, because I think Revere Police also have responsibility. I mean, it's Revere Beach Boulevard, and there's residents that live all up and down that boulevard that are worried about these stray bullets. I don't think it's out of the, I don't think it's out of the realm that we would have some sort of response and protection for Revere residents that live on that beach. That's all.
And Counselor, we did respond there. And we sent whatever assets we had...
I'm not saying you didn't respond. I'm saying you keep saying that it's a state police jurisdiction, and that, I, I just said, that's troubling to me.
Thank you.
The second question is, what is gonna be done?
Why is it the DCR commissioning? Excuse me, excuse me. I, I get it, I get it. Okay, we're just gonna finish with everybody, and then, okay, thank you. Counselor Morabito?
Okay, so off, I understand we don't have jurisdiction on Revere Beach law enforcement. I also recognize that a closure of the Revere Beach Train Station would inconvenience many individuals. But at the end of the day, we're a city that has three train locations, three, three train stops, and others don't. Why can't we have a code red system and work with MBTA, work with the state police, and once the speech is reaching maximum capacity or starting to fill up, have a code red system, shut down the, shut down the Revere Beach Train Station in the Wonderland, and have one of the two closed? And what we can do is, we can have shuttles, increase shuttles that go from one location to the other, just to, just to minimize the inconvenience and while prioritizing safety. At the end of the day, think if you go to Marahaly, if you go to the MBTA, if you go to anyone, they're gonna take suffering inconvenience over someone's life. So I think we need to have a proactive measure, where all three entities come to a table and say, "We need to do this. We need to set up a meeting, we need to get things down, we need to have a code red, we need to have a communication." 'Cause without communication, we're all screwed. And someone has to come to the table and say, "Let's meet, and let's have a code red."
Madam President, if I may, through you to Counselor Morabito. So just to let everyone know, we are working, we have an inter-agency meeting planned in the coming days to work across all agencies. So it'll be the acting mayor's office with the Revere Police Department, our chief, Chief Callahan. We will have the DCR, MBTA, Transit Police, State Police, we'll all be getting together in a room and sort of talking through what we can all do and what's, some of these strategies that you mentioned. I don't know what the sort of mitigation measures could entail down at the beach in terms of the MBTA stations, but that's why we wanna, you know, have MBTA in the room and have the Transit Police available to sort of talk through some of these ideas. So if you have any other ideas, feel free to send them to us, hopefully in the next couple of days before we meet with them. But I'm just letting you know that that meeting is on the books.
Excellent, 'cause I, I think that's a start. And we, we need proactive measures. I think the closure of one train station isn't gonna impact something, us much as a community, but it's gonna help protect someone.
Counselor, to respond to your question, that is not a bad idea if we could get the tee on board. And as Mr. Hill said, there's gonna be a multiple agency meeting that we're trying to put together with all the stakeholders in place. Maybe they would be willing to do something like that.
Thank you. Counselor Silvestri?
Thank you for leaving, Madam President. Chief, I just wanna say thank you for coming up and, and answering the questions tonight. And I'm sure that this whole council will agree. How do we make that one fifteen to one twenty, or one twenty-five? We need more men and women on the streets, and if this body can do anything to help you get there, please let us know.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the support. And we can have that discussion at a later date. We definitely can talk about that, expanding the police department. Thank you again.
Thank you, Chief. All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number twenty-three, motion presented by Counselor Visconti, in response to the shootings which occurred over Memorial Day weekend, that the acting mayor appear before the Revere City Council to explain what exactly, if any, was the public safety plan that was put in place over the Memorial Day weekend to prepare for such an anticipated busy weekend, and what is the public safety plan moving forward to keep our residents safe?
Counselor Visconti?
Yes, Madam President, I think we've had a lengthy discussion on, on this matter. So I, we would, we would just pass that along as a motion that we've already discussed. We can add them together if you wanna, however it goes is fine by me. I think the discussions has been had, you know, we've had that. Thank you.
All in favor, all opposed, so ordered. Calendar item?
Madam President, through you, could, could we hold items twenty-four and twenty-five, skip to twenty-six, because twenty-six has to do with the shooting on the beach, and I didn't wanna interrupt with my two motions that are not as solemn as that, so...
Granted, Counselor. We're taking, we're taking... No, I'm not gonna suspend rules. We're just gonna go in order, Counselor, so we'll go to twenty-four.
Calendar item number twenty-four, motion presented by Counselors Serino and Cogliandro, that the acting mayor direct the DPW to place an additional trash receptacle and dogbag dispenser on the grassy area between Lantern Road and Steeple Street.
Madam President?
Counselor Serino, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. It speaks for itself, unless Counselor Cogliandro wants to say something.
It does. I hate to bring such, you know, an important issue like this before, no, just kidding. It speaks for itself.
Thank you, Counselor. All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number twenty-five, motion presented by Counselors Serino and President Pro Tempore McKenna, that the city council order to a public hearing the following amendment to section eight point oh four point oh nine oh of the revised ordinances of the city of Revere relative to the use of disposable plastic bags at retail business establishments. Section one, section eight point oh four point oh nine oh C of the municipal ordinances is hereby amended by adding the following sentence at the end of the section, "Stores that are twenty thousand square feet or larger shall not charge a fee to patrons for a recyclable paper bag alternative."
Counselor Serino?
Thank you, Madam President. Basically, many residents might realize that there's a large supermarket in town that all of a sudden, within the last month or so, has started charging 10 cents per paper bag. And I feel that's wrong. Other residents feel that's wrong. So in order to comply with the plastic bag ban, I don't see why we can't make an exception for large stores that are 20,000 square feet or larger to not charge customers that 10 cent for a paper bag that, you know, breaks when you get outside. That's pretty much all I have on that.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm gonna, you said, you took the words right out of my mouth, so I'm just gonna leave it as that. Refer this to a public hearing on June 26.
Calendar item number 26, motion presented by Counselor Silvestri, that the City Council award a certificate of merit to Sergeant Michael Travato for his leadership on Monday, May 28. Sergeant Travato's clear and concise command and control directly led to the arrest of five individuals who were suspects in the shooting on Revere Beach.
Counselor Silvestri?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, and Madam Secretary, if we could table this motion, in speaking with the chief and a few other senior enlisted officers, they wanted to get me the names of the other officers that were on the beach that night, so we can give them all certificates. And I'd like to do that from the whole City Council. So I'll get the rest of those names, and then I'll refile this motion.
Yeah, I just need to get the, I just need to get the rest of the names.
Place it on file?
No, no, no.
Oh, table it.
Table it or?
Table it.
Table it.
Calendar item number 27, motion presented by Council President Pro Tempore McKenna, that the Acting Mayor request a representative from Massport to appear before the City Council to explain the Boston Logan Airport runway 15R 33L 2023 Safety and Rehab Project to the residents of Revere. Massport will undertake a major safety and pavement rehabilitation project for Logan Airport's longest runway, and will inundate Revere, especially Beauchamp, for 100 days. Massport has been in communication with Winthrop and East Boston, but not Revere.
Name and record for, name and address for the record, please.
Madam President, Anthony Guerrero, Deputy Director of Community Relations in Federal Affairs. It's good to see you and the members of the council and the mayor's office. I'm here with my colleague Steve Suprizio to talk about a major rehabilitation in FAA closure of runway 15R 33L. That closure is going to be for 100 days, beginning in August 15, with a reopening sometime in early November. Again, this is a safety rehabilitation project. I do have boards, and it's going to be a little bit tough, but I just want to show you one. 15R 33L is our longest runway. And this project will begin again on the 5th, on August 15. Now, we did send a communication via the Revere Journal this past week, and we also sent communications to both the mayor's office and the clerk's office. I have that communication that I will share with the clerk, as well as an upcoming meeting, a virtual meeting on June 13, a week from now. We're going to ask people from all communities, whether they're north of Boston, east Boston, and south of Boston, to participate, so they'll understand what this closure means. We've worked with the airlines, the FAA, you know, we at Massport is the airport operator, in looking at that time, and when winds will be best as with this closure. It is more or less of a downtime, being at the end of August and going into November. Different runways will be in use, and I'm going to ask my colleague Steve Suprizio to identify that.
He's hoping it bothers us.
Yeah, so this is the runway we'll be closing here, 15R 33L, you can see on the board here. This runway is used typically in northwest winds. It is our longest runway at the airport. But the bigger portion of the impacts the communities will see is this is our preferred overnight runway configuration, because it utilizes overwater routes for both arrivals and departures. So that's something the communities will see a bit of an increases in some of the overnight air traffic, since that runway will be closed, as well as daytime operation increases as well. Particularly for Revere, we'll be seeing an increase in 22 left arrivals, which impact the Point of Pines area of Revere, as well as the Beauchamp area of Revere. And this is just some of the, what we're doing is part of the rehabilitation, repaving the runways, upgrading the electrical infrastructure, and doing some LED lights for the runway lights. And we've already begun doing some enabling construction, preconstruction, so we've had some intermittent closures to the runway to get that started. All traffic related to this runway closure will be on the airport roadways, coming in through 1A, and also through the Mighty Cofflin Bypass Road onto Chelsea Street into East Boston and Chelsea. So we are keeping an eye on that traffic, any related traffic to this project.
Thank you. Any counselors like to speak? Counselor Rizzo?
Thank you very much, Madam President. And Anthony, thank you for being here. Not great news for our city. But before I just have a few comments and a few questions, I just want to say what an asset you are to Massport in your role. You've been there for quite some time, and you've been extremely responsive to the community whenever we've needed anything. And while, while a lot of people are impacted by the ongoings at Massport, particularly air traffic, you know, I know that when we have questions, or we have concerns, you do your best to get them addressed. And we appreciate that. We appreciate your hard work there.
Thank you, Counselor.
So this is a 100-day project, so this is a temporary problem that we're facing? Am I correct in hearing that?
That's correct. It's a 100-day closure. So we've already done some of the mitigating work as we speak. That runway will be officially closed for 100 days.
So the mitigating work being what?
So in terms of, you know, mitigating work would be getting the equipment onsite, ordering the different types of equipment that might be associated with that project, reevaluating truck routes, some stuff towards making that project net transition as clean and as simple as possible.
Okay. One thing I've learned, and I'm not sure, granted, this is only a 100-day project, but at the same time, residents that are impacted on a daily basis anyway, whether it be in Beauchamp, and of course, they're severely impacted, people that live in the Point of Pines, they are absolutely impacted as well. Do you have any programs or programs that can be implemented to help our residents in terms of soundproofing or anything like that? Is there any discussion of that? Because, you know, air traffic is, obviously, it's increasing. It's not decreasing. And, you know, you're expanding there at Logan. So it seems to me that with the increase in travel, you know, there should be some sort of mitigation for people who are most impacted. And if it's not in the works, is it something you could put in the works to help residents with their soundproofing or with any mitigation that you might be able to provide them for the impacts that they endure, you know, from Massport?
Through the chair, Counsel, all very good questions. So in terms of this project, remember, runway use is determined that day by weather patterns and the FAA. Massport is just the operator of the airport. In terms of soundproofing, Massport was one of the first in the nation to have a very robust soundproofing program in the beginning, it was the early 80s, you know that very well. At this point in time, and we've worked with both the mayor's office and Counselor McKenna, Congresswoman Catherine Clark, several years ago, with help from this city, and the city of Winthrop had changed legislation and put in language for the US Congress to reevaluate homes that were done and soundproved prior to 1993. So there are a lot of homes in Beauchamp, Winthrop, and then coming into East Boston, to take a look and refund that program for the residential sound installation program. Stephen, to my left here, is part of that program. So we actually had a meeting in Beauchamp and Winthrop back in last November to reevaluate some homes. We're looking at 10. We're hoping that if they meet federal guidelines that are established by the FAA, maybe there might be some opportunity to take a look at those homes. As we know, Beauchamp's the oldest section in Revere. Take a look at those homes prior to 93. That's off the 2020 noise contour. We're looking at the, we just filed the 2021 noise contour, to your point, Counselor. Noise and traffic is picking up post-COVID, so taking a look at those numbers and see where that might expand, it might include some other homes. Again, those are just for homes prior to 1993. I know the Council, President McKenna and I have talked about this, and there could be some debate as to with, through Congresswoman Clark's office, maybe looking at, to include homes maybe 95 and earlier. So that's where that program is. And again, just working with the FAA, trying to, I don't want, for lack of better term, Counselor, shear the burden, right? You're going to have a lot of traffic. You're already seeing it coming in along the Revere Beachway through Beauchamp, but also working with the FAA to see where this could be mitigated.
And just one final question, if I may, Madam President. So it sounds like this program is kind of in the works, or is soon to be in the works, correct? We?
So this is, I just want to make sure you're clear, right? This is very, through the chair, this is, this is different. Okay? So we're doing the closure of the runway for 100 days, because that's a mandatory safety and rehabilitation work. Prior to that, there is a project right now that we're looking at residential sound improving. We have our consultant that's actually in Beauchamp now, looking at a certain collection of homes that were done prior to 1993. And if they meet the federal guidelines as established by the FAA, then there's a chance that those homes, after being properly evaluated, if they check all the boxes, could get new sound insulation. So that's off the 2020 contour. We just filed the 2021 contour. Then we'll do 2022, so forth and so on.
Yeah, I understand they're two different things, but, you know, it's not often we get to have you before us. So, you know, while you're here, I think, you know, just to let our residents know.
Understood. Thank you, Counselor.
All right. Thank you, Anthony. Appreciate it.
Any other counselors? Permission on the, from the chair to speak? Thank you. Anthony, thank you for waiting. I know it was a long time.
Madam President, no problem.
I just want to know if you're offering any, Winthrop or East Boston, any mitigation compensation for this 100 days? That is?
We are not.
Okay. The other thing is, I'd like to know, I mean, you know where I live. I can see what they're serving for snacks. That's how low the planes go. I just want to know about, are you going to be flying from 11 to 5 a.m. over Beauchamp and Revere? Can we use the ocean?
Stephen, want to maybe chirp in on that?
It's possible that you could get some overnight flights arriving 22 left.
Oh, sorry.
Just because of the?
Stephen, can you speak at the front?
Sir. Yeah, so it is possible to get an increase in arrival, you know, arrival of traffic on 22 left, just because that overnight preferred runway is 15R 33L. So there is the possibility that the FAA will decide to utilize 22 left for some arrivals from the 12 a.m. midnight time period to 5 a.m. time period.
Madam President, I think you understand, too. A lot of those are international flights. So they're going to have certain time banks that they have to meet. So that's why you're seeing, you're seeing that coming at that particular time.
So I don't know if you could do anything about this, but the ceiling's getting lower and lower.
Okay.
The ceiling's supposed to be 400 feet over my house. It's getting to be, especially with these Airbusers, they're coming in 200 feet over the community. I'm wondering if we can work on that, especially during the 100 days, because they're getting lower and lower. So, and the sound is, I mean, especially when they're taking off from Logan, it's, the whole house shakes. Everybody shakes. And the one thing about Massport is, we've never really gotten any mitigation money whatsoever, any help with anything. And we have the Beauchamp School that the planes fly over 200 feet in the air, and they need new windows. They can't even afford, the city can't afford to put the windows in. So it would be helpful if Massport, especially where we have to go through this 100 days, maybe can help the Beauchamp School to get some new windows, because, I mean, you've got kids in there, and they're flying over the school at all hours.
Madam President, just a couple of things. We definitely can ask the FAA regarding the ceiling and the flights of arrival. So we can pose that question. Back to the Beauchamp School, which we're very familiar with. The program for residential sound insulation is residential sound. So we've talked to the FAA that's based out of Burlington to have them talk to the folks in DC, to stop maybe considering businesses and schools, like the Beauchamp School, like the Miss K School in East Boston. So those are, those are things that have never been part of the sound insulation program, which is 80%, 80% of it is funded by the federal government, only 20% are by the airport operator. So that is a question that has been asked.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Silvestri?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. My question, with the extension and the expansion of the runways, is this going to allow more access to the Airbusers? Is that a part of the reason for the extension?
First of all, let me clarify, Counsel, through the chair. It's not an extension. This is just a safety rehabilitation project. So we're not expanding, no extension.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Anybody else? Counselor Rizzo?
Just one more question. And because early on, I remember when you first were giving your presentation, you talked about an increase in the Point of Pines and Beauchamp. And we're kind of only addressing Beauchamp, which obviously needs to be addressed, but we kind of neglected to talk about the Pines. Is there any mitigation efforts similar to what they're doing right now with this new program through Catherine Clark's office to help with the soundproofing in the Point of Pines area? Or is that something that can be expanded?
So let me just clarify. What Congresswoman Clark did was rewrite the legislation to have the FAA reevaluate and take a look back at homes that were done under this residential program prior to 1993. So those homes that were done in Beauchamp and so forth and so on that are already listed, those are the homes of the primary. When you talk about a contour, it looks like a drip of water, right? So you drip the water in that circle that surrounds it. The 2021 contour, which is right out of COVID, is a smaller one. Sorry, 2020. Now it's going to expand and expand. I'm not aware of any soundproofing down in, that was ever done in the Point of Pines, but it's, it's not without the realm of asking, Counselor.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we definitely have to ask the question, because since this first, since, since the soundproofing first happened back in the 80s.
Yes.
I mean, air traffic, obviously, I mean, it's, it's expanded exponentially. So now you've got, that big circle is getting bigger and bigger and bigger in terms of people that are getting impacted. So, you know, I mean, I don't think, I mean, obviously, it's not something that the Revere City Council can do, but, I mean, maybe we could at least get the ball rolling through Congresswoman Clark, Congresswoman Clark's office, to say, hey, we need to kind of revisit this again. Because, you know, as much, and I know firsthand, and Council President McKenna was talking about, she can see the snacks that are being served on these planes. And I've been up there many times to see that, you know, that same thing. But I've also been down the Point of Pines when I see the flight paths now that are getting more and more and more, you know, visible. And, you know, where years ago, it really wasn't what it is today. So there's got to be something that I think we need to discuss going forward to help those people down there that are also dealing with a resco problem.
Yes.
You know, so, you know, we really need to, you know, we really need to kind of keep this discussion going and further out, and, you know, further the efforts to help the people that are being impacted most by air traffic.
Counselor, it's worth the question.
Thank you.
Can we ask why this is in August, when all our windows are open?
We're not through with the council yet, and then we'll get to you, okay? Counselor Zimbudo?
Thank you, Madam President. Anthony, I want to thank you for coming up here tonight.
Thank you, Counselor.
Because I know how hard your job is, and it's, it's easy when you're coming with good news. But when you're coming with bad news, it's, and this is bad news, there's no question about it. I've been down the Pines, and somebody brought up the old resco. And I've been down the Pines to try to mitigate the noise that was supposedly coming from wind waste or wheel accelerator. And it was, you know, the planes are like two feet over the roofs on the riverside there. So, you know, the noise is coming from planes, and we don't even want to get into the pollution that's coming from the planes. But that's, we'd be getting into science, and a lot of people that are against them don't want to get into science. Anyways, the bottom line is, they are really going to be, you know, when the runway's open, that's a nightmare. going to be, you know, on, when, when the runways are open, that's a nightmare down there. And I've spent a lot of time there, because I was monitoring, monitoring what was going on at Wind Waste and to see if the, the rhetoric was true. And of course, it wasn't, but, but I did see the traffic is unbelievable. And now it's going to be worse. So these people are going to suffer for the 100 days. And, and I think they deserve, if anybody deserves a new look at mitigation for soundproofing, they certainly do. And I, again, I thank you for your presentation. Even though it's not good news, at least it's factual. And I thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. We have a speaker?
Sure. Yep.
Ronald Clark, Witten, Revere. I might, I just have a question. Why, why are we doing this in August, when all our windows are wide open? Why wouldn't this be more like October, November? I mean, you're going to be killing us. I live in the Pines.
Yeah, so, so there's really two reasons. You know, we have to do it when the weather is somewhat warmer during construction season. And then two, the runway is most heavily used in, in northwest wind situations, which are more prevalent during the fall and winter months. So this is a slower time that we don't need the runway as much. So this was the time that's kind of best to, to fit in the work without being too intrusive to the, to the runways.
Next spring.
Next spring, usually the northwesterly winds continue through the spring.
So that's, so only in warm weather?
Right. And again, we, we can't, you know, really deal with freezing temperatures. So we, you know, have to do it during construction season. It's kind of limits, you know, limits our window of when we can get out there to do the work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other counselors? Oh, we have another speaker.
Hi, I'm Angela Sawire. I live at 15 Bateman Ave. I'm the president of the Pointe du Pines Beach Association. The flight path has changed. So now, before, the airplanes were more in the ocean. Now they're actually coming over our homes. And we don't get any mitigation money. We don't get anything. You don't even look at us down the Pointe du Pines. It's always Beauchamp or East Boston, but never the Pointe du Pines. So I was hoping that maybe you can include us and actually come down there and see what actually happens to us. The, the airplanes, as they come down, they drop their jet, their, their fuel. Go look at my roof. The, once, the whole side of my roof is black. And you can tell that's exactly where they start dropping their fuel. And I just want it to start being taken care of as well. We need to be included. We're always like excluded from everything. And Counselor Rizzo, thank you for bringing everything up for me. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony, for coming. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
All in favor? All opposed? So ordered?
Calendar item number 28, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro, that the acting mayor, chief of police, and director of inspectional services appear before the city council to discuss procedures relative to the city's enforcement of the noise ordinance.
Counselor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Madam President. Just get a lot of complaints about, you know, how is this playing music too loud, or whatever it might be. We have a 24/7 noise ordinance. And I think there's a, a little bit of a disconnect on what the actual procedure is. I have, you know, I've worked with inspectional services. They need evidence of what's going on. We've called Revere Police Department. They told us they're not enforcing it until after 10 p.m. So just want to get something, you know, solid on the books, not, not just for us, but for the residents that are going through these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else? Any other counselors? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered?
Calendar item number 29, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro, that the acting mayor request the chief of police to appear before the city council to discuss chapter 9.16.010 with revised ordinances of the city of Revere relative to the curfew of children under 16 years old.
Counselor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Madam President. So this was filed kind of in response to what happened at the beach the other night. We do, we have an ordinance on the books that says children under 16 are supposed to be home before 9:30 if they're not accompanied by a responsible adult. So I just want to know if there's any possibility of enforcing that, you know, to kind of eliminate all the congestion down the beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Okay. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered?
Late motions, calendar item number 30, motion presented by Counselor Zambudo, that the Revere City Council award a certificate of commendation to Philip Emporado in recognition of his 90th birthday.
Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll save my comments for the, for the presentation. However, Phil is a wonderful guy and a former commander of the American Legion post, and he's a, somebody who certainly deserves recognition. And that's why I put it in. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novosovski?
Thank you, Madam President. Congratulations, Counselor. This is a great, great motion. He is a great guy. And just to add to this, he just finished his 60th year as a member of the American Legion. So we just gave him a certificate for that. And he's a great, great guy.
You can help me with the comments for the certificate.
Sure.
Sticks is his, his nickname, yeah.
Thank you, counselors. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered?
Calendar item number 31, motion presented by counselors Serino and Cogliandro, that the acting mayor and council president pro tempore convene a joint meeting of the city council and the school committee forthwith for the purposes of hosting a listening session for parents, teachers, and students of Revere public schools, in order to hear firsthand from the families of Revere about the state of decorum in our public school district. This should be in addition to the listening session the high school administration is hosting on June 12th, and shall be to determine a proper course of action from city leaders to curtail current ongoings in the schools related to student violence.
Counselor Serino?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, as I think we are all aware, there was another incident on Friday in Revere High School where there was a fight of some sort. We saw the videos, so, we saw the videos on social media, and parents, if you checked your city council inboxes, we did receive a few emails from concerned parents. So I think this elevates the discussion that we've had in the past, in the last few months. And I think it's time that we call the school committee here and say, you know, let's have, if, if, if nothing is necessarily being done above and beyond what was explained by the superintendent at the previous meeting, that we host a listening session whereby the school committee and the city council listen to these concerns, because we're not making them up. They're legitimate, these are legitimate constituents, residents, parents of Revere students who are concerned about their kids. I had one, one woman say, my daughter is a sophomore, I think, at Revere High School, and she's a good kid, but I'm, I'm afraid for her because of the things that are, are going on and that she might get caught up in something. And these fears and echoes are what we've been hearing for months and months. So I think we try to put this to bed once and for all, have a joint meeting with the school committee, and try to see if there could be a plan put in place moving forward. And I think Counselor Cogliandro might want to also speak on this one, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Madam President. This is about creating a safe place where parents can come and voice their concerns. And just a little bit of a, some information, I, I did a information, public records request on 911 calls, or police calls to and from Revere High School. There's 300. Takeaway directed patrols, takeaway property checks, even if it's 100. That's still a lot. This is a conversation that's worth happening. I'm tired of being told that it's a school committee issue when people are coming to us. And I'm not going to stay silent about it anymore. This is about the children that go to these schools. And we owe it to them to have this kind of meeting. Thank you.
Any other counselors? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered?
Late motion presented by Counselor Zambudo, that the acting mayor request the city solicitor and the chief of talent and culture to draft a legal memorandum relative to the application of the conflict of interest law concerning city employees who are actively campaigning for elected offices. The legal memorandum shall direct city employees engaging in political activity at city events to use personal or vacation time when out of the office. In detail, prohibited political activities and/or unwarranted privileges, including but not limited to the following: use of city time when conducting campaign activities such as photo opportunities at city events, advocating for amendments to the revised ordinances of the city of Revere, advocating for funding of public services, and conducting non-election related political activities concerning matters within their departments. Additionally, that the city council be provided with copies of payroll time sheets, beginning May 1st, 23 through November 7th of 23, of the employees campaigning for public office to ensure that taxpayer monies are not being used for political activities.
State your point.
So I, where this was a late motion, I reached out to the ethics committee in the state house. I was unable to get a response by, before the meeting started. I talked to the city solicitor. He wasn't clear where it stood. So I'm wondering if these motions could be tabled until I can get a clear understanding from the ethics commission in Boston whether I can speak on this motion.
Point, point of information.
State your point.
This, this is an analysis similar to when a Mastart motion comes up here. I, I believe the council is not allowed to speak on this motion, and that's my opinion. And, and I, I know that conflict of interest laws will back me up on that.
Mark Silvestri?
Any other counselors? Counselor Maribito?
I have a question. Shouldn't the city solicitor be on this? You have chief of talent in culture to-
The city solicitor is on.
Oh, I should see.
The first person mentioned.
I'm going blind at this hour. Sorry.
It's okay.
Counselor Novosovski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam President.
By the way-
If I may, Counselor, I have the floor.
I wasn't even fini-
Wait a minute. She gave the floor to me.
No, 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 no.
Counselor, wait a minute.
She gave the floor to me. I was interrupted on my motion.
Excuse me.
I was interrupted on my motion.
You sat back. I didn't do anything.
I had a point of inquiry.
Okay. Guys.
Madam President.
Guys.
I never got, I don't want anything to do with this. This has not, this has nothing to do with you.
Counselor Silvestri?
Joanne, shut them off. Push the button. Shut them off.
Have my time sheets from the state. Madam President, can, can I have-
Yes, and I apologize for not giving you the floor. So state your point, Counselor.
I put this motion in because, for one, there are several city employees running for office in the city of Revere. Unheard of. If you go to 351 cities, you won't see this kind of activity of city employees running for office. There are strict conflict of interest laws that I believe are not being followed. This had nothing to do with the particular counselor that's arguing at this point. This is just simply following, giving people information to follow the conflict of interest laws. This was not-
Counselor, I'm the only employee that sits on this council.
But this was not directed at anybody in particular.
Counselor Silvestri.
But all's I asked for-
Let him finish.
You let me finish, please.
Let him finish.
But the only thing I asked for was to get a clear understanding from the state before I could speak on it.
I get it. He's, let him finish this, please. Go ahead. Counselor Zambudo?
Okay. The, the bottom line is, again, this was not singling anybody out, except it's unprecedented that this many city employees are running for public office in, in the city. And that's what this is about. There are strict governing ethics laws that govern this.
And you need to follow those governing laws to do it, sir, Counselor. And I follow every ethics law that's put in front of me. And I don't break none of them.
I'm not in a debate with you, Counselor. This is, this is a motion I'm putting in.
Again, I'm the only employee that sits on this council.
This, this has nothing to do with you.
They don't?
No. This wasn't, this was put in because there's six, there's six people running for office that work for the city.
Counselor Silvestri. Counselor Silvestri, will you come back to the podium, please? Thank you. Counselor Zambudo, please continue.
Anyways, the bottom line is that, that I'm asking, I'm asking for the city solicitor, along with the human resources department and the people that govern that, to make these people aware of the conflict of interest laws that strictly govern this. And as long as you follow them, you've got nothing to worry about. That's what this is about. It's not singling anybody out. It's, it's, it's really for information, because I know a lot of people don't know these laws. I know them very well. And-
As do I.
Well, there's no point in going any further. That's the reason for this motion. That's why it's here.
Okay. And, and again, I ask for this to be tabled until I can get an indefinite answer from the state whether I'm able to speak on this motion, Madam President. That's all I'm asking.
Okay.
Madam President.
Counselor Novosovski?
Thank you. Madam President, it was always been my understanding that we have a, in the city, when an employee comes in, we have an employee manual, which is the conflict of interest rules and regulations and laws are in it. So I just want to make sure that, you know, that's still intact, because I always remembered there was an employee manual for city employees, so.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Would you, we have a speaker? Come up to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Madam President. Counselor, good evening. I believe we, my name is Christian Mahano, 51 Second Street, Revere. I'm speaking as a resident in all of this, about this case. First one, I just want to see the transparency that we have with the counselor. It's not an agenda. Okay? This came up on the last minute. I'm asking, where's the transparency? I don't see an agenda. Two, to go about this, we do take a course with the state. There's nothing to, to be worried. Somebody worrying, that's my, is doing this. We get the handbook from the city. We also go for the, and training for the state. We know the law, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Madam President. Just to clarify, I believe what he's trying to say is the employees have to take a course every one or two years on this. That's all. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Okay. We're going to table this until Counselor Silvestri gets his information.
I'm challenging that.
Okay.
I challenge your challenge.
Put it in, put it in subcommittee then. Yeah, put it in subcommittee.
Okay, I'm going to put it in legislative affairs. Thank you. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered?
Last late motion, motion presented by Counselor Zambudo, that the following ordinance be ordered to a public hearing on June 26th, an ordinance further amending the revised ordinances of the city of Revere relative to the city council. Section 1, Chapter 2.12, city council of the revised ordinances of the city of Revere is hereby amended by inserting the following new section. Section 2.12.140, prohibitions. One, candidates for office of city councillor at large and office award councillor who are employed by the city of Revere shall take a leave of absence from their employment. Two, no city councillor shall hold any compensated appointive city office or city employment during their term and until two years following the expiration of the term for which they were elected. Section three, no member of the city council shall take part in the conduct of the administrative business of the city. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect on January 1 of '24.
Madam Clerk.
Point of inquiry, Madam-
Madam Clerk.
Point of inquiry.
I need to, I need to amend this to not include retirees.
I would like, I would like it to be amended to include retirees and state employees.
Counselor Zambudo? Counselor Zimbudo, you...
Of course.
Counselor Zimbudo offered a motion to amend on the floor. Counselor Silvestri offered a substitute motion. So now the substitute motion is on the floor to amend ordinance to include retirees and, sorry, retirees and state employees. On the substitute motion to amend.
Substitute, I have a substitute motion as well.
You have to take up one, you can't be a substitute and a substitute. There has to be...
Can I do this one?
Show me where it says you can't do a substitute and a substitute.
Counselor Zimbudo and Counselor Silvestri, where in this amendment would you like to
I simply wanted to include the, after the end of the motion, to say this does not apply to retirees, meaning the new ordinance. Still has to go to a public hearing and so forth. Now, Counselor Silvestri is trying to add state employees, which has nothing to do with city employees, but that's a whole nother issue.
It does. We have, we have taxpayers that you're saying you want to watch the taxpayers not paying extra funds. And you know what? I'm sure the state taxpayers want to know the same thing, Counselor. When, when you're questioning my timesheet, I then want to question yours. So if we're going to turn in timesheets, let's all turn our timesheets in.
Mine is an open book.
So is mine.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Can I, can I move that, you know, there's so much misguidance, I don't, I don't know the real word, but we really can't put our heads together to get a real motion out of this thing. And I would suggest that we put this in Legislative Affairs and talk about it in there. Put it in, put it in committee.
Madam President, let me just say, because I didn't get to really speak on this, our neighboring cities, some of them, one in particular is Lynn, that has this almost exact ordinance that I'm proposing. So, but whatever, if they want to put it in committee, that's fine with me.
Okay. I would say, put it in Legislative Affairs, and we'll deal with it then. Anybody else? Okay, thank you for your public participation in tonight's city council meeting. On behalf of the Revere City Council, we offer our congratulations to the Revere High School class of 2024. This meeting stands adjourned until June 26th. Thank you.